All right, so I am going to make a motion to enter into executive session to consider the memorandum of agreement with the IFF Local 1947. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David, I don't think. David, can you hear me?
He's incognito.
Nope, he moved. Okay, thumbs up for David. And I'm a yes. So now, as soon as we see one, two, three, four, five. Yes, all right. Then I will open the meeting. As a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Um, Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes, I'm here. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yes.
Megan? I see you. Sorry, Becky?
Yes.
All right, and I see various other staff members on as well. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of the emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for tonight's meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs, and we recommend the members and public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs, unless I know otherwise. Again, you go to the Board of Selectmen page, at the general page, go to the packet for tonight, and that's where you'll find the agenda and supporting documents. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items of public comment, after the members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the Chair has the list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So, moving to the next item in the agenda, is going to be public comments. Do I have any public comments this evening? Okay. All right, then I will move on to item four, acceptance of minutes, and I will accept a motion regarding the acceptance of these minutes.
Okay, I will move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of November 17, 2020, as shown, authorizing use of digital signature if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody have any comments regarding minutes? All right, then all those in favor, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Moving on to item five, correspondence. I will entertain a motion.
I move to accept and approve correspondences A through K as shown.
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns regarding any of the correspondence articles? Greg, I did have one question about the MassWorks infrastructure program. I realized that it was not funded, and I'm not sure if Justin's on the call tonight. But I was curious, it did say that, you know, we could follow up with them to find out if there's, you know, if we get any feedback. Oh, Megan, just.
Yeah, we had a meeting about it today, Justine, with Bill Nemzer, Town Planner, Justin Wayne, myself, and Caitlin, the Assistant Town Planner, and they did encourage us to follow up with them to talk more about, you know, our needs here, and Representative Hogan actually encouraged us to have an onsite visit to invite Secretary Caneely out to Maynard. So Bill's working to coordinate that, and we just had a little bit of a strategy session today. So when we have more information about what the tour will entail and dates and things like that, we'll be sure to let you know.
Great, great, thank you. Anyone else have anything else? All right. Then all those in favor, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Consent agenda. So I will entertain a motion.
All right, I'll move to accept and approve them. Oh, no, that's not the one.
Want me to do it, Armand?
Go ahead.
I'll move to accept and approve the consent agenda items as listed and presented pending all inspections and taxes. Wait a minute, did I get the right thing? To accept and approve the list of consent agenda items as presented pending all inspections and taxes are completed, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Armand. Anyone have any questions about these? These are all, I mean, these are all, obviously, things have been issued, so.
What is the 2021 seasonal population increase estimation for?
No, that's just the ABCC wants to know if there is any change, like significant change in our population. So seasonal would more apply to like the Cape, or like a, or like a town that's like a vacation destination, but we don't have that significant change up or down. So, but if that, the ABCC takes that consideration when they consider like the ratio, I don't know how they figure out their formula. I'm sure I could look it up, but when they're trying to figure out exactly how many licenses they would recommend each, or they just kind of want to know what the, what the population is in comparison to the licenses that we have.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or concerns regarding the renewals? All right, all in favor? David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Moving on to use of town property. A, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of town property adjacent to the Asvet River Rail Trail in Maynard from Acton Street to Winter Street slash Sheridan Street between Saturday, December 5th through Sunday, January 10th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. And Greg, do you want to talk, speak to this? Do you want me to? I see Holly on the, on the call also.
I would just introduce Holly and see, and see what the girls want to do.
Excellent. Hi, Holly.
Hi, Holly Murray, 9 and 1/2 Maple Street, and this is Reagan.
Hi, Reagan.
Welcome, Reagan.
So we're a
meeting.
We're seventh grade Girl Scout troop. We have five members, and the girls came up with an idea to add a little holiday cheer in town by really making bows and putting them on a cup, a few of the pine trees along the rail trail. So that's what we were thinking about doing. It's a small project, but we thought it might be kind of nice in town.
Do you want to say anything? All right, sounds good. Does anyone have any questions?
I think it's a wonderful thing.
Have you identified which trees you're going to use?
I did take a bike along the trail and had a couple ideas, a few trees that stood out were the ones by the Welcome to Maynard Arts District, closer to the Rockland Ave side, and behind, near the bridge, behind CVS slash the post office, there's one on the CVS side that looked good, and I was thinking none of the trees that really look like they're in somebody's yard, maybe some that are just kind of alone, so people don't feel like we're putting bows in their yard. I had picked out about 10. I counted up to 60 plus trees, so there's a lot out there, and they're not huge, so we'd be able to safely get on a step ladder and not injure the trees.
And multiple bows for each tree, or just one big bow? How do you perceive that?
Well, with the five girls, we were thinking about making two bows each, so it'll be about 10 trees. Depending on how.
So one bow, one bow, one bow per tree?
Yeah, just right on the top.
Okay.
So yeah, this, I can imagine this project could be very nice, like, I know they do a certain, they have something in Littleton with decorating trees with different businesses, but this is simple.
I know in certain trails, mystery decorators have put up Christmas trees in the middle of the woods in Maynard, so it'll be nice to see something a little more publicly accessible too, as opposed to an Easter egg for people to find while hiking.
Excellent. Anyone have any other questions for Holly? I do want to appreciate, I do want to thank you for reaching out, because I think that it's a, I mean, I'm sure everyone feels the same way. It's a, it's a great project, and I think engaging the girls and being able to give them an activity, especially during this time, is great also, and just brightening the area around here is really great.
Thank you for the initiative.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much.
All right, so all in favor? David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Good luck, have fun.
Yes, thank you for doing that.
All right, so moving on to 7B, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the use of town property of the Asvet River Rail Trail facing Main Street behind John's Cleaners at 127 Main Street for the proposed art installation as presented contingent upon adherence to the direction of the Director of Public Works.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Armand. All right, Greg?
Right, so this is, this is also kind of an interesting, intriguing art project, but, so I think we should introduce the artists and see what they, and see what they want to do, but, you know, they have, similar to the Girl Scouts, they have been already in discussions with our departments, and so Ms. Bogdan and Ms. Harding, this is my first time seeing them. So, could you introduce yourselves and tell the board and the public what you want to do?
I'm Lori Bogdan, and Kimberly Harding and I have created a, an art installation. It's a, it's a large 18 foot by four and a half foot long woven piece that has a representation woven inside that of the Asvet River, Concord River, Sebree Rivers, and we made this piece to ask the community to bring awareness to the conservation and and good health of our river systems, and we chose Maynard to hang this piece because that, the Asvet River runs right below that bridge, and we will be hanging it the outside, so both faces, the bike trail walking path, and you can see it from Main Street looking across to the bridge. And our proposal is that we hang it for a couple of months in either the late spring or early summer, and we'll just work with the town on the timing. And we did speak with DPW, and he is, where we've reached an understanding on how to hang this safely, and I defer to Kimberly for further discussion.
Well, I don't know if I have anything more to add to what Lori said, but I'm Kimberly Harding, and yeah, it's, installation will be very, you know, no drilling, no, nothing, nothing harming the bridge will be merely tied on, and we look forward, we hope that we can add a little brightness to that bridge and bring awareness to the river and and its needs.
Any concerns that you might have about weather impacts and how will it control? For example, if we got a storm like we had yesterday, with winds at 60 miles an hour, would that be a problem? And then if it does become dislodged, who's responsible for coming and putting it back up, and who's responsible for contacting somebody, et cetera?
We do not have any concerns about weather impact. All of the materials in the piece are completely weatherproof nylon, plastic, et cetera. We plan to tie it on very securely. This piece has been up once before through snowstorms and windstorms and all kinds of impact, and we haven't had an issue.
Where was it, where was it shown, where was it shown before?
It was in a forest in Concord. The Hapgood Wright Forest, and it was there for two months, did great, made it through that, that snowstorm that we had right at Halloween time. It's durable, we'll tie it in well, and if something did happen, we'll fix it, someone noticed it, we'd be happy to come out and fetch it and take care of it.
I had a quick question about, actually, so two things. So the picture that you, that we have in your proposal, so that is actually the piece?
Yes.
Because I think it says it was a Hapgood Wright Forest, so that's the piece that you're proposing to put on the bridge?
Yes.
Okay, and the other question I had is, so are you, I'm trying to picture it, are you going to string it over the railing of the bridge? So you see the whole, I was thinking that it was going to be hanging kind of over the bridge, so.
It would be on the, between the posts on the outside of the bridge and the railing. Say, see it through the railing, not above the railing, which it would be safer there for everybody, and you would be able to see it from Main Street there also.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Those main visibility, would that be from the other bridge, the Main Street Bridge?
Yes.
Across the river?
Yes. All right. Hearing nothing else. My computer just shut off. So, all in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I lost you, sorry. And I'm a yes.
Yay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you for doing that.
Look forward to it.
All right. Great. All right. So I will read. Where are we, we're in 724. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, at 7:10 PM via Zoom remote meeting. Access instructions below. The Board of Selectmen will vote on the application for amendment, application for a change of location from 43 Nathan Street to 25 Nathan Street for off-premise sale of malt and wine alcohol beverages as a common victual license for Art Specialties LLC, doing business as Art Specialties at 25 Nathan Street, Maynard, Mass. Copy of the applications on file in the Office of the Board of Selectmen. So then do I move to open, was that the motion to open the hearing, right?
Yeah, the hearing is now open, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Greg.
No, I didn't know if you want to have someone make the motion, or just kind of reintroduce where we are.
Sure, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the amendment to the retail alcoholic beverages license to reflect the change in location of Art Specialties LLC from 43 Nathan Street to 25 Nathan Street.
Second.
Thank you, Armand. All right, so now, Greg.
Yeah, so, so, I'm going to say his last name wrong, I apologize, but Arthur Nagarian?
Yes, that's good, Greg.
You're just saying that, okay.
Good.
Okay, very good. So, of Art Specialties, so they, he was up the way a little bit on Nathan Street, and he moved, he bought the Bank of America bank?
Yeah, 25 Nathan Street.
Yep, down on 25, so he wants to move his store down there, that includes the liquor license, and so to do that, he's amending the liquor license to do that move. Now, it's, so he provided a lot of information, some of it's confidential, because it's some of his, you know, personal information, so it's in the executive content, but some of the question was, because we're also, as you can see further on this agenda, considering the relationship in that same building for Sugarloaf, which is the retail marijuana license, so it's a little more complicated than just moving the license from A to B. Not only that, but he was leasing the building, or leasing the office space, or, I'm sorry, the store space, and then when he's going down to 25 Nathan, you'll be having the whole store, so there was, it's complicated in the building code adherence and fire safety code adherence and security adherence and whatnot, so it's just not as straightforward. So, so there you go, what, you know, it's open to the board, the departments have met with Arthur, and have given him a lot of feedback and trying to work with him inspection wise and kind of get him on the way. I'm not sure, I think one question I would have for Arthur is, how far along are you? Like, how's it going with getting the building renovated?
So, architect and engineer, they already finished the work, and I submitted to town yesterday, so Richard has all the information that he was looking for. And I met with the fire chief as well, and he told me what I need to do, so we have to change the batteries and inspect the fire extinguishers, so the last thing for me, it's basically waiting to be approved from Rich for his drawings, and that's all.
Okay, so you're referring to Rick Asman, the building inspector?
Yeah, pretty much everything that I have been asked, I took care of it.
Okay.
No, go ahead, Greg, sorry.
No, I was just going to ask, like, when do you want to open, bud?
Oh, it has to, like, once you guys agree today, it has to go to ABCC, they have to send it back, and then Selectmen signs again, then I'll be able to move. It's all about the licensing right now, changing the address.
Oh, all right, okay.
If I may, I don't have a problem with switching the license to a new address, but I'm a bit concerned when I see the list of the fire chief. Is Chief Tower still on?
Yeah, he's still.
You had a list that you presented with this of a number of concerns, but then there's a bunch of other emails in there, that when you read it, it looks like, you know, this is okay, this is okay, this is okay. The list that you have that we have in front of us is dated November 2nd, almost a month ago. Are those still concerns of yours as of today? Because some of this, like, weight load on a top floor is a concern to me, you know.
That one's been, that one's already been signed by architect, and it's been stamped by architect and engineer, and it's been submitted to town.
I understand, that's why I'm asking the chief if some of these things have been addressed.
Yeah, so I met with, with him two days, I think, after our Zoom meeting, and we went through my concerns, and he's going to address every one of our concerns. The biggest concern I had was making sure that the fire alarm system's up and running, which we turned it on when it's there, it does work. So he needs to get it inspected, he might need to change some detectors, I don't know, the company that comes out and specs it, their third party and vendor, they'll have to, you know, certify whether or not it's in good working order. The other concerns I had were the weight load, yep, and he's addressed that with Rick Asman, so I have no concerns with that. One of the concerns I had was, just from a safety standpoint, was the the vault, but he's addressed that concern as well, so he's done everything I asked him to do, well, he's going to do everything I've asked him to do, so as long as he complies with what we've asked him to do, then I have no issues with it at all.
If, so going back to that point, if he's going to do everything, should
Well, he might have already done it, I haven't been in there.
Okay, so let's assume that it's not done yet, let's just play that, because I don't know, it might be, but if it was not done yet, would it be incumbent on Rick as the building inspector to not allow occupancy until those issues were addressed, or is it still an issue for this board, separate from the transfer of a license to a new address, which I see as a different issue than the safety issues, because, you know, we can transfer a license to a new address, but I also don't want to have him in a situation where he's lost the license for the current address.
Yeah, no, I don't think that should be a problem. He, you should be able to transfer the license. If he has any issues when he gets ready to open up, then he'll have to address them, but if he addresses all the issues that we've talked about, there shouldn't be any problems.
I did, I did have one other question about the moving, so, so it's a 2,000 square foot space is what you're, is what you're proposing, so what part of that building is the 2,000 square feet? Is that the top part?
Yes, that's the top part.
So is that the entire top part?
No, it's just the, where was Bank of Mexico was, just the front part, not the side, because the side is the proposed Sugarloaf area.
Okay. So, and I think, and I had, and I saw, I see Kate just jumped on, Kate Federoff, our council. My one question, and I don't, I just want to double check this, is can we issue a liquor license and a retail marijuana license to the same physical address? Because there's not like a 25A and 25B Nathan Street, so it's literally, we're issuing a liquor license for 25 Nathan Street and one for, and a marijuana, you know, HCA for 25 Nathan Street.
Do you want me to, Justin? Okay, so is it, I imagine they must have like suite numbers or whatever.
So they do have it, and that separate area, it also going to be totally have its own separate entrance? So the Sugarloaf will have its own separate entrance, it's not going to be true where the art specialty entrance will be.
Right, but is there going to be like a suite number?
Yeah, I think there's a suite, I have to look up, but I think they might have suite number as well.
Okay, so as long, so I'm okay, and again, this is just me, but I'm okay with this as long as there's some kind of definition between the two of them, because I don't feel comfortable approving a liquor license in a retail marijuana address.
I'm so sorry, I jumped on late. I thought, I never thought you guys would.
This is actually the, this is the liquor license, this isn't the marijuana.
Right, we're trying to, this is Kate Federoff, by the way, Labor Town Council, she does Labor Council, she does Marijuana Council, she's an all-around council, so but I think, to clarify what Justine is trying to say, like, we want to make sure that the two entities are distinguished, like, there's, there's a, there's a very clear distinction between the license for the liquor license and the license for the marijuana, and, and it would seem like just for business purposes that they would have separate addresses. Now, we might be able to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kate, but we might be able to address this when the time comes for, and it, when and if the time comes for the marijuana license itself, like, we could, we could issue that license to not, you know, at a different address than 25 Nathan Street, which is what the license is for this one, so.
Yeah, but in order for you to do that, don't you have to, some kind of a legal step that you have to take to change?
Madam? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Walter Sullivan on behalf of Sugarloaf. For purposes of the premises, if you look at the alcohol beverages license that I've submitted, there's a diagram that shows you the premises. That's separate. That's separate and distinct from the the design of the building. Addresses are numbered by the United States Postal Service, not by cities or towns, so I don't know for this particular building, but more than likely, it just has one address, but within that address will be two two separate and distinct businesses. And the premises as defined that you have on the alcoholic beverages application specifically says the part of the building that art can use and can only use for its alcoholic beverages business. The same will be true for the cannabis business, that it'll be a specifically defined premises within the building. So there'll be two separate and distinct premises within one building. And that's okay under the alcoholic beverages law as well as the cannabis control law.
And I I'd echo that too, I'd agree with Walter, I didn't realize we were on liquor, I was thinking marijuana the whole time.
There's nothing wrong with liquor.
Sorry about that.
But um, for liquor licenses, and you'll remember this because it's all fresh in our minds, where we had to expand the premises for, and that was for, I don't know what, this is, I guess, a package store, but for on premise sales, it's similarly described in a really specific way, so that when you expanded to the outdoors, you had to expand their license, and we did that through the emergency legislation. So the same holds true, that really defines what area um, consists of the licensed premises where you can sell the alcohol, so I think provided that the application has that sort of sketch diagram, you should be all set um, on the liquor side.
I mean, to follow up on what Kate just said, also included in the alcoholic beverages guidance and regulations, you cannot have alcohol and cannabis being sold at the same premise.
So, but that's my question, technically, it's the same address.
Property address.
And there's an address of different.
I'm I'm sorry.
Within a building. I'm sorry.
So, so that's my question, is that it that it is the same address, though?
But it's a different premise.
They're gonna end up separating that, Verizon will do that, number one, but we can separate the town issues, the the numbers, so we could do that suite one, suite two, unit one, unit two, whatever you wanted to do to separate them. We have that, that's quite common. A lot of the buildings in Maynard have multiple, you know, multiple buildings or multiple occupancies in one building. Twenty-four Main Street, that's only gonna be using part of the building, the rest of that might end up being something else, so it's, that's gonna be a similar situation. So I, we can, we can, DPW issues the numbers, we can figure out the best way to do that, just leave it twenty-five, unit A, unit B, but that shouldn't be an issue.
I think, I think Justine's point is not necessarily like a twenty-four Main Street, where you have different businesses in the same uh, square footage of a building, but the fact that the particular, into this particular businesses that we are approving or being asked to approve a license for, in this instance, is one on one side of the same building is alcohol, on the other side of the same building theoretically is marijuana, and I think Justine's question is, is there a problem with that?
Right, and I, David, I think that's a good point, and that's a policy question for the board to decide, I mean, legally speaking, what the CCC focuses on is really physical separation and right, what what they want to do is prevent diversion and and all of those issues from happening.
And and to that point, they're gonna have separate entrances and it is gonna be, you know, obviously, it's gonna be a separation, you know, from the walls, it's not gonna be in one, one, one place.
Right, exactly, so from a, from a legal perspective, it's allowable, um, provided there is that physical separation, and then the policy question is for the board, you know.
And Madam Chair, if I may, um, and Kate can speak to this more than I can. You will see in some communities on their zoning ordinance relative to cannabis that in the ordinance itself, it specifically says it either has to be a standalone building, or it can't be a building that has other types of businesses, but that specifically wrote, written into the zoning ordinance versus what we're talking here, can, under both the alcoholic beverages law and the cannabis law, can you have those two businesses in the same building? And the answer is yes, as long as they're separate and distinct.
Okay, oh, I think he froze. Okay. All right. Okay, sorry, uh, you froze there for a minute.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, um, so I kind of monopolized part of those questions. Does anyone else have any questions for Art or um, or Kate, at this point, because we're using her now too? Sorry. All right. So then, I, so it is a public hearing, does anyone have any, any public have comments they want to make about this? Okay, all right. So then I will, uh, we've entertained the motion, we've seconded it, so all those in favor to approve the amendment, uh, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Uh, so, thank you, congratulations, Art, good luck. Um, and I will make a motion to close the public hearing at seven forty, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Armand, uh, all those in favor, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, next. I will entertain a motion for uh, family delicatessen.
Uh, I'll move to approve the retail package store license for off premise uh, of malt and wine alcoholic beverages as a common victular license for Family Delicatessen LLC at one twenty-nine Main Street.
Second.
Thank you, Armand. All right, uh, Greg?
Well, actually, um, I would like to introduce the owner, what I'm, I'm forgetting her name, and I apologize. Can you introduce yourself? Well, the the point is that this is something they have been pursuing for a while, I think, I think in their business vision that they wanted to be able to sell um, alcoholic beverages, so this is kind of exciting that that we're allowing them to to get to this part, this phase of their business. So go ahead, I see you on the screen, but I'm sorry, I forgot, I forgot your name.
Hi, Janet Spinos. I'm family delicatessen. Yes. Yeah, no, we're just, we're excited about, you know, selling the beverage and um, having, you know, more opportunity for families and doing um, different kinds of business with the um, alcohol.
I think, were you, were you talking at the last meeting, you were gonna do something like gift baskets and things like?
Yes, so I'm looking forward to doing gift baskets and um, just with like, you know, what people would like to offer, of course, make sure there's all validation with license and there's no underage, you know, anybody getting away with anything like that.
Excellent, I, there is a note in here to make sure that uh, everyone who sells is tip certified, have you gone through that at all?
I've been looking at it, but I need to have a um, an ID, I guess, for that, so I couldn't go online yet. I I thought there was an alcohol ID, I don't know if it was my own business um, ID to be able to use for that, so.
Becky, do you have any information on that?
Um, yeah, I can send you the information to, you can take the class online, but Maynard does prefer the actual class, the in-class, we just had one at the Yelks uh, weeks ago, but um, you know, this spring, I'm sure we'll have another one, but in the meantime, um, everyone at your establishment would have sixty days to to go online and take the online class.
I mean, I would have everybody go right online, everybody would need to do that. Do that, yeah, definitely.
It is a good in-person class, too.
How are they doing the, maybe, I don't know, Chief Noel, you know, how are they doing the online class? Given part of that tip certification is physically checking IDs and things like that.
Um, I've always been with Becky, we do the in-person, we're not going down there, so uh, the online class, I've not, I haven't seen, but uh, the one other thing I want to remind him, you have to put the posters up for um, the certain under twenty-one posters and things that you have to place, you'll have to place the liquor license and all of that, there's certain.
I have spares in my office, when you come down to get your license, I can give you those and give you a copy of the rules and regs.
Thank you.
Excellent, does anyone have any questions? All right. Uh, then all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David? You're muted.
Don't mute it, there you go.
Yes.
Thank you, and I am yes. So good luck, congratulations.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So quick, quick question, Greg, was, why was that one not a hearing and the last one was, um?
What, good, wait, why was that not a hearing?
Yes.
I think it was a hearing the last time. In September, the actual hearing was in September, so this, we just got back from the A, B, C, C, this is the approval?
Okay, I'm with you, thank you.
No, good, good question, thanks for clarifying.
So Arts will come back to us and we'll vote on that again.
Yes.
I got it now, thank you.
Excellent, so next we're moving on to item number ten uh, with our good friend, Terenzio. Uh, how are you doing today, sir?
Good evening, folks, good evening, Chairperson St. John, Honorable Members of the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Johnson, uh, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Terenzio Vopacelli, um, I usually say if anybody can spell that, they win a prize, but my name is on the screen, so there goes that joke.
We all win tonight.
Everybody, everybody's a winner, we all get to go to family delicatessen.
Ah, it's good.
And she just left the meeting anyways. Thank you for having me on, um, it is a pleasure once again to work with the Town of Maynard uh, on its twenty-twenty audited financial statements. Uh, a number of documents were sent in advance, not the least of which were the actual audited financial statements themselves. Um, a management letter, which was rather benign, and a required communications letter, which is about three pages long, that has today's date on it. As I say every year, I'm not gonna bore you by reading the whole uh, required communications, but I will touch upon a couple items that are important, um, management, which includes Mr. Guzzo and his team, as well as uh, uh, Town Administrator Johnson and his team uh, in in the Board of Selectmen is responsible for the selection and use of the appropriate accounting policies, as well as the actual underlying financial statements themselves, our responsibilities to conduct an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as the auditing standards promulgated by the Controller General of the United States on the governmental accounting standards. Um, accounting is, uh, accounting estimates are an integral part of any preparation of the financial statements. The most critical accounting estimates that affect your financial statements include your net OPEB liability. Uh, the total OPEB liability is actuarially determined, we do a number of procedures uh, surrounding the underlying data of that, uh, as well as procedures surrounding the actual net assets themselves. Uh, the net pension liability uh, is actuarially determined, we are also the auditors of your pension system. Um, so I'm happy to say that we uh, did uh, give that a clean audit opinion. And then the allowances for uh, doubtful accounts, um, those are the most critical accounting estimates within your financial statements. They're also some of the most sensitive accounting disclosures in the financial statements, in fact, your disclosures around your pension and your OPEB are probably seven pages long in this, in this large document. Um, we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. For the purposes of this discussion, a disagreement with management is a financial accounting, reporting, or auditing matter, whether or not resolved to our satisfaction, that could be significant to the financial statements or our report. I'm pleased to report to you that there were no such disagreements during the course of our financial statement audit. Uh, we made certain representations or requested certain representations of management in a letter dated October thirteenth of twenty twenty, for which they did return that to us. I think the rest of it is uh, we do generally discuss a variety of other matters with management, um, should something arise to the level that we determine is necessary to communicate to the board, uh, we do so at that time. But like I said, we had no significant difficulties or any disagreements with management. The financial statements themselves are a clean audit opinion, uh, they're dated October thirteenth. Uh, given the fact that the year ends on June thirtieth, and we actually wrapped up our audit uh, by mid-September, um, that's really a testament to the quality of the underlying financial data that we received. I am very saddened to say that, you know, I'm gonna miss, uh, I'm gonna miss Cheryl, uh, work with her since since she was hired at the town, and um, I'm gonna miss if, for that matter, I'm gonna miss Mike, because this will be his last financial statement audit with us too. And I really hope that you folks can replace them with such, you know, quality character um, professionals. Uh, I joked around that, uh, when I, when I work with them, and that first management letter that we put out, we, we, we commended the town for hiring quote-unquote seasoned professionals, and they always bust my chops about using the word seasoned professionals, but uh, it was a pleasure working with them, they had a great wealth of knowledge, and again, um, I'm gonna miss working with them as, as I'm sure all of you will. Um, I prepared a formal presentation, I'm not sure if um, if that's a, was sent to you or not, but um, you can kind of thumb through that as much as you, as you'd like. Uh, I touched upon some of the macroeconomic trends that are facing uh, the Commonwealth. As you're all aware, in the first quarter, COVID nineteen effects on the markets, uh, US equities uh, markets were uh, were rocked in the first quarter. Uh, most of that had rebounded by June thirtieth, and at this point in time, uh, it amazes me to say that the S and P five hundred is actually up twelve percent for the year. The NASDAQ is up thirty-six percent, and the Dow is up almost four percent. If you had asked me that in, in May, I would have, I might have laughed at you, that were the case. Uh, that does bode well for the town as far as its OPEB investments, its regular investments, and very importantly, its pension system, uh, which is at December thirty-first, twenty twenty year end, uh, based on the mix of investments that the pension system has, um, it's roughly a sixty, forty mix um, between equities and and um, private equity print funds, um, it should be, it should be a good year. Um, and again, that's not something we would have predicted uh, in the second quarter of the year, for sure. On a microeconomic level, um, it's likely that your twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, um, I'm sorry, your twenty-twenty-one revenues on hotel and meals, excise taxes, motor vehicle excise taxes, and anything having to do with user fees, think like um, recreational fees and whatnot, those will not trend as expected. The Commonwealth has committed to level fund in twenty-twenty-one, but as you're probably all well aware, a formal budget has not been approved. I don't think that they'll renege on that, that commitment, but uh, without a formal budget, there, that is always a possibility. I think it's unlikely, uh, but again, it is a possibility. Unemployment trends uh, throughout the Commonwealth, you know, we came into two thousand nineteen with a two-point-eight percent unemployment rate. At June, that went up to seventeen point seven, it has come down to nine point six in September, and I just uh, found out that October was at seven point four percent, so there is a rebound. Unfortunately, it's some of the sector's most hardest hit, uh, being in the uh, uh, hospitality, travel, entertainment industries really are are still feeling the effects of this, along with the the fluid nature of the COVID nineteen regulations um, that that are placed upon them. As I indicated, your actuarial valuation of your pension system, um, your pension system's investments will be measured as of December thirty-first of twenty twenty, and that's also your actuarial valuation date, uh, you have that done every two years, uh, believe Parac is your actuary for that. So that is kind of fortunate that the the market has rebounded, being in a valuation year, so that that should bode well for your pension system, which is rather robustly funded in comparison to the rest of the state, and you shall be pretty proud of that. Again, the effects of COVID-19 go without saying. You folks have been dealing with that on a daily basis for, for months. Coming into fiscal '21, which is now five months into it, you folks had roughly $2.4 million in stabilization funds and about $842,000 in certified free cash to assist in your, your 2021 budget. Looking back to fiscal '20, which was the year that we audited, budget revenues lagged, actual revenues rather lagged budget by about $90,000, which is probably consistent with what anybody expected, given the, the nature of what happened in the fourth quarter. And your expenditures in fiscal '20 were about $800,000 under budget, which reflected really halting discretionary spending, as well as moving some of those costs to a special revenue fund, specifically designed for COVID under the CARES Act. Long-term debt decreased by $4 million in 2020. That's fantastic, you folks. As we, we had our first meeting about seven years ago, we had indicated you have about 10 years of significant debt burden. That is starting to come down by fiscal '24. You will be dropping down about $2.2 million in general fund expenditures for debt service, based on the current debt load. And then by 2027, under $2 million per year, again, based on the current debt load. And that should, that should be good news to all of your taxpayers. And give you some additional flexibility for future projects. As I mentioned before, your pension system is roughly 76% funded. That would place you, based on the latest data published by PARAC in the top one-third of the state. I caution you, the information that PARAC has available is quite dated. They have not updated it in, in quite some time. But based on my experience, I, I audit 15 pension systems in the state out of 105. I don't think that's gonna change. You're supposed to be still in the top one-third. And your OPEB is funded at just, just below 2%. There is no current requirement to fund OPEB. That is being done as, as a matter of good governance, of fiscal stewardship. But to put that in perspective, 44% of the state is less than 1% funded. 43% of the state is between 1 and 10% funded. So you're, you're right, you're right, kind of in that ballpark where most of the communities of your size, your size are. As I indicated, we, we issued a management letter to the town. I'm happy to say there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal control system. The management letter is really, contains a number of informational matters surrounding network security. One, one matter that didn't make it to the management letter that should have, and I, I apologize for omitting it, but I did send emails to Cheryl Kane several weeks ago on it, is the increased frequency and sophistication of phishing scams going on in, in Massachusetts. I've actually been personally involved in investigating some of these. The phishing scams from several years ago are very remedial compared to what we're seeing today. There used to be lots of telltale signs, lots of red flags, we would call them. And while those red flags are still there, they're not as easy to spot. So I will, I will send that same email correspondence to Mike Guzzo, so that he can communicate it to the Treasury staff, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. But the long and the short is, if somebody requests to make a change in payment via email, you, you almost have to, you have, you have to do some research to make sure that, that, that's really a valid request. And it is unfortunate. We get tied up in our day-to-day work and sometimes just process things, because it's just easy to do. But there has to be a higher degree of diligence. And I am happy to say several years ago that Cheryl was able to catch something, a, somebody had tried to make a draw off of your accounts. And based on the controls that were put in place, they were, they were stopped. So I'm hoping that you all are gonna continue with that diligence that you have on a day-to-day basis. There's a new lease accounting standard that kicks in in 2022. I'll work with Mike on that. It's really just financial reporting, won't impact your day-to-day operations. And then finally, as you're all well aware, you do have a lot of transition issues within your finance department. And I encourage you to, I understand you're interviewing right now for treasurer's role. I encourage you to, to get the Finance Director, Town Accountant advertised as soon as possible. There is a shortage in the state. It will take some time to fill. With that said, are there any questions, comments, or concerns about the financial statement audit for 2020? That was a mouthful.
I, I want to thank you, obviously, for all of the work. And it is great to hear that, that the decisions that we've been making and that the financing that we've had in place are, are doing a good job. And, you know, we know that from what we see, but it's much easier, you know, it's much better to hear it from, from someone who's independent. And I appreciate your, your thought about trying to advertise for the Finance Director sooner rather than later. I, I feel the same way as well. And I know we will get on that shortly. Does anyone else have any, anything else to ask? All right. Well, that's pretty simple.
Thank you very much for providing me this, this forum. And I wish you all the best as you wrap up your 2020. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
I want to thank Mike too, for his work, because the smooth transmission of that report is largely reflective of, of the work that, that him and Cheryl put in.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. They are, they are unsung heroes. So thank you for singing for them. All right. Next, we're going to item 11, which is the Recreation Commission. I had a meeting with Jim Hines a few, probably about a month or so ago. And he had approached me, kind of just wanting to touch base after we'd had the meeting back in February, just about the Recreation Commission and the status of, of their, of their board. One of the things that he had talked about is the possibility of increasing the, the number of members on the board. You know, maybe that will gather more interest, more, yeah, more excitement to it. So I know he's reached out to Bill Coleman about the possibility of some, of either changing a bylaw, changing the charter. You know, I think it has to be changed in the charter, which Jim had a good point. And I know that this will come up later when we do a charter review, is there are a fair amount of those, those types of commissions that have, like the Board of Health is another one, that it says in the charter, it gives you the, the member number. And it might be time to entertain taking the member numbers out of those and managing that by bylaw, because it's easier to change a bylaw than it is to change the charter. So, but anyway, so, so I invited, you know, in lieu of our conversations with our goals regarding having boards come in and talk about, you know, how they work and, you know, really kind of figuring out where they fit in the town. I figured I would invite Jim and the rest of the Rec Commission to attend the meeting and tell us what, a little bit about what they're, what's going on and what their challenges are and, and if we can support them, or what we can support them with. So Jim?
Thanks, Justine. So there currently are four of us. I see Barry and Barry Roach and Denise Walsh. Not sure if Tim Walton's on or not. I know he was working, so he may or may not be on. So thanks for having us. You know, the, you know, I had, we had had Steve Jones just was our, was our fifth member and was our chairman. He retired from the, from the Recreation Commission and from CPC. He was also the, the Recreation Representative on CPC. So he retired in, in, in June. And obviously with COVID, there hasn't been a lot going on with Recreation. You know, as a, as a group, and, and again, this is a, an interesting forum to, to have this conversation. But, you know, I reached out to Justine, just because I think that there was a, you know, I think our board, and I'm gonna speak for, I think, our board, but I'm more than, you know, happy to let them jump in afterwards. It's a bit of an, I'd say apathy is probably the best word right now. You know, we have, I think, worked hard to try to bring programs to Maynard. We have tried to secure any kind of funds, any kind of administrative help for the last couple of years. We have been unsuccessful in doing that. We have been unsuccessful. And there hasn't really been any discussion around why we have been successful or unsuccessful. I understand the, the, the financial constraints that the town has. And as I think I said to you, Justine, I, you know, I know we're probably, you know, somewhere at number 32 in terms of the priority, you know, tree in Maynard. And I, I think our feeling is that we don't see that ever changing. Understanding it's a pandemic and everything going on, but, you know, a lot of the requests we had were pre-pandemic and really kind of wasn't really addressed. So, you know, we have a flagship program with the back, the basketball, the, the Recreation Basketball Program, which we kind of took, you know, when the Boys and Girls Club decided they didn't want to do it anymore, we've took it on. It doesn't make, it's, it's based on the economics. It's not, it's not making money and probably losing money based on the economics. You know, Denise Walsh has been kind of instrumental in running that, but it's, I don't want to say it's a full-time job, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's, it's quite a job. So that's where we're at. We current, I'm, I've kind of taken the mantle as the acting chair, but I have not. I know I have a renewal sitting, waiting to be signed, that I don't know if I'm gonna sign or not, whether I'm going to renew for the two years after June. I'm not sure the status of the other members of the board. We have, we have interviewed a couple of people, or at least had conversations. I don't know. They probably were interviewing us, just as much as we were interviewing them in terms of joining the Recreation Commission. We had the thought process that maybe in lieu of getting any kind of admin support, that adding more members to our board would at least help with some of the process. But kind of ran into a roadblock, as you know, with, with the charter, and that it is quite a arduous process to go from five to seven. And I think Bill said it's a two-year process, I think, or something like that. So I don't, that's something we need to continue to work on, but I don't think it's a quick, I don't think we're gonna be able to. Right now, we have four. We have two people who are, who may be on Facebook Live watching this. We invited them to do that. They may be able to help in some way, shape, or form. We currently do not have anybody who wants to sit on the CPC board, which Steve did. They, we just don't have the time to do it. There's somebody who has expressed interest, but that would, someone would have to come off their plate in order for them to, to, so it's kind of, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I feel like I'm just kind of throwing up on the Zoom call. But, you know, this, this is a kind of where we're at. And so I will, I think I've spelled out. I don't know if we're gonna accomplish anything here, if it just is a matter of just us kind of expressing how, where, where we're at. Barry and Denise, and like I said, if Tim is on, are more than welcome to kind of share their thoughts as well.
I do have a quick question before, before I defer to Barry or Tim or Denise. And, and I'm not sure who it's, I think this is to Greg or Megan. Is there, can there be, instead of, instead of five members of the Rec Commission, can there be associate members? I know that, I think Conservation and Planning and things like that have other members that are like alternates. Is that something that's defined by charter, or is that something that they could add as a position to, to kind of? So basically, you start getting people involved, you get the excitement and, and the momentum of them. And then when, when there are people who have been doing it for, you know, four, five, eight, whatever years, and they're ready to, to move on and pass the mantle, there's someone to pass it to.
No, I like the idea of having this, or alternate, however you want to term it, associate or alternate members. I like, I do like that concept. I also want to point out that this is not a, this is not a jointly posted meeting. So, so I wasn't expecting the invitation to have, otherwise I would have recommended posting it jointly. But I, my only expectation was that, was that Jim was gonna be speaking. So it, we're really, we're not supposed to let the other members speak, because there's a quorum of the body present. I know it's like a technicality, but.
Okay.
Okay. So but to your, to your question, yes, I think that's something we should definitely pursue, is, is looking into whether we can have alternates or associates assigned, and whether we do that through a bylaw change or otherwise. I think that's definitely something we can, we can look into.
Okay. Jim, I'm sorry. That was, that was probably my bad. I, I wasn't thinking in that way. But yeah, so if you have more than one member sharing their opinions with more than just one person, it's, without a posted meeting, it, it actually constitutes a violation. So we do have to be aware of that.
Okay. So, so that's fine. So yeah, again, maybe there's a follow-up meeting that we need to, that, that, that we need to have. Like I said, I think, you know, our hope, the, like I said, the last couple of years, and I think we tried to do it maybe more formally last year, and then the year before, was to try to get some type of budget, both for admin help and then to have some things to be able to fix things around town, where it doesn't have to fall on the DPW, where we can kind of, you know, use some funds. That hasn't happened. You know, we've, we, we, I guess, not sure if, you know, it just may be that Maynard doesn't have a Recreation Commission. It may be that, you know, someone sits as a recreation person on CPC, and that's the way that the money is generated. And the commission isn't, you know, and, and again, it may just be that it's run our cars with us. We all have kids who are probably at the end of our, you know, Steve was a, a great driver of a lot of the things that we were trying to do. We want to try to put some programs together. We want to try to have some improvements. You know, we, you know, we spent a lot of time on Fowler. Part of that was Recreation, but part of that was a separate group. You know, so, you know, I, I think there are lots of towns, you know, that have, you know, Recreation Culture budgets. I guess Shirley has a $400,000 Recreation and, and, and Culture Budget. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm learning that as we speak. But anyways, so again.
And I completely, so, and I know that I've, I've so obviously, we do still have budget issues, right? You know, because I, I think later on, we're gonna talk about, it's, it's in the beginning processes, but, you know, as of right now, we're cutting over a million dollars out of the budget to begin with. But so, so actually, my first question is, are you guys running a basketball program this year, or are you not because of COVID? Someone was asking about whether basketball was running, so I.
Yeah. So Denise would be the person to ask, but I'm gonna, so I'm gonna try to speak for Denise, since Denise can't speak. We're probably not going to have a formal, you know, typically, we would have already been in registration and the, you know, practices would have been starting already in games. I think Denise Nargi had, games would probably be already going, correct? Obviously, due to COVID, that's not happening. There has been some emails that have been sent out, just to kind of, similar to what Maynard Youth Soccer did. They did a lot of skills training, which I think was successful. So the hope is that we're gonna have some, something. But again, a lot of it is kind of in accordance with Massachusetts State laws, the MIAA. We're gonna try to, you know, be in concert with that. The other point is that there is no, there's, I guess, there's no middle, there's not gonna be any middle school basketball. So that may, or may not put a damper, maybe, I don't know, you know. It's up in the air right now. Perhaps we can do something in the new year if things start to look a little better. But right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Because I'm monopolizing again.
Yeah, I, you know, and I heard Jim, what you were saying, from chairing the Cultural Council for a few years, everything you said resonated with me, from, from, you know, keeping up membership support, to trying to find the admin support within Town Hall, to the idea of adding associate members to, to try to get more done, to, you know, defining our mission, to just kind of our scope, to figuring out budget, whether it's coming from Town Hall or from other sources. So, you know, first of all, I really feel for you on all of those issues. It, it, it does occur to me that, you know, when looking at the budget overall, it's obviously a very difficult situation. But I do feel that there are, you know, for, for pulling back on, on a major item that we might want, or maybe I should say moderate item, and not getting into specifics, that we could generate a small pool of money for several different small projects. that we could generate a small pool of money for several different small projects that do need to be done around town. If you're talking about, you know, a small, you know, few thousand dollars. So, you know, I, I know Greg, this isn't what you want to hear right now at this particular moment in the budget cycle, given what we're looking at, but I, I do feel that there are a number of projects, if we have them clearly defined in scope, that we, we should be able to find money from. If it's, if it's giving up, you know, one item that's $50,000 to create 10, $5,000 pools that could be spent by some of these small groups. I'm just thinking aloud right now, that could go a long way to, to providing resources for some of these, these groups so that they're not, as he said, 39th in line for the priority of the town. Now, this might be the exact wrong year to have that conversation in the middle of pandemic and we're level funded and we have a fire station, but I, I, I do hear you.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? How much, so going back to the CPC, how, so obviously they fund the projects as if they, they obviously can't fund administration, administrative.
Right, right.
And is there anything that, that's on the docket that you guys are, are looking to try to do this year?
So, I don't think there's anything that's going to be done this year. I know that we tried to earmark some funds. Steve had put a placeholder for perhaps trying to put a little bit of money into the, the front fields in, in front of the high school, which is kind of utilized as a, a practice field and a, so that, so that's, that was approved by the, by the CPC. We haven't put any forth, any other programs, projects that I'm aware of. Again, I, you know, probably, we probably need to get with the CPC at some point because, you know, there's a bit of a disconnect since Steve left. And we haven't had somebody to, you know, fill that slot. So, I know that, you know, one of the things that sometimes is confusing is what CPC will and won't do in terms of recreation, right? It's obviously maintenance and small projects like Jeff was record, was talking about, isn't usually a CPC type thing. So, yeah, I mean, again, I think it's just a matter of trying to get maybe, I don't know, and that's, that's an example, just a small commitment to kind of help us, help you, so to speak, if that makes sense. You know, and, and, and like I said, I don't, we're not asking for big dollars. I think we're at, and, and again, I don't know how we solve the admin support thing, but that would be a, a huge benefit for us, particularly as we try to administer some of these programs. You know, becomes just kind of a, you know, and, and again, I don't want to, you know, I'm speaking to a bunch of volunteers, so it's, it's, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, overstate, you know.
A clear scope of what the admin support that you're requesting versus what the volunteers would be doing and same for what any extra budget would be used for?
It's something, I, I don't know if I have, you know, a, a full scope of it, Jeff, but definitely we have discussed. You know, we have, and again, there hasn't really been much happening with, with, with COVID, but let's, you know, take, you know, calendar year nineteen. You know, we had a number of programs that we would like to promote, that we would like to have, you know, kind of have the idea and then have somebody be able to kind of do the admin around it. You know, the golf program, the recreation basket, like I said, some help. I think Denise would love some help, just in terms of the administrative part of, 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 of the running a basket, you know, running a basketball program, you know. I have, you know, previous life was in Maynard Youth Soccer and there was a board of fifteen people that, you know, would, would run that program. Denise is essentially a, you know, a committee of one that, that runs that program. So, we help where we can, but yeah, we probably need to scope that out a little bit, Jeff, but I think we could probably do that. We could probably do that for twenty-one because I know there are things that we want to run and it's just a matter of getting a little bit of assistance, maybe, you know, to kind of just make it run a little bit smoother and, 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 you know, allow us to be able to, to, to kind of maybe put some more programs out there.
But Jim, do you have an amount in mind or is that something that you're kind of leaving it up?
You know, Armin, when we, when we put our proposal together back in October, we had asked for seventy-five thousand. You know, it was a bit of a dart. You know, we had, you know, admin support of fifteen thousand, which was maybe, you know, fifteen hours a week, which is probably really high. You know, annual town improvements, we had it like fifty thousand dollars. And again, kind of Jeff, the kind of things that we were, you know, that you look around town and, you know, that need some, you know, the, the tennis courts or the basketball courts, you know, small field improvements here and there. And then some resources to put towards town programs, you know, whether it's, you know, just equipment. You know, so it, it was, you know, some scholarships for individuals to play rec basketball or to take advantage of the ski program that we were, we were trying to do. So, that's, so we had kind of seventy-five was, was the number we had looked, we had asked for, Armon, not knowing if we would get any or some of that. And, and like I said, there was really no discussion around it. It just, it just never, it kind of went into the ether.
Jim, one observation or comment I would make is it's incredibly important to get representation on the CPC from recreation, given that one-third of the bucket of CPC funds is supposed to be designated towards recreation targeted type things. So to not have a voice for recreation on that committee where there is a large pot of taxpayer money is, you know, that's a concern. But I also think that when I think of the Recreation Commission, I don't just think of organized sports recreation. That recreation also includes cross-country skiing. Recreation also includes all sorts of outdoor activities beyond just organized sports for youth. And I think that might be the market for additional, you know, interested residents to get involved if they see that recreation is more than just youth sports. Because we have, you know, obviously Maynard Youth Soccer, we have the youth football program, we have, you know, those types of things for the organized sport and we have Little League Baseball, of course. So, do you think that that might be part of where there is a missing link per se is in the greater picture of recreation versus just organized sports?
Well, I mean, to, to, I mean, a couple of things. One is those, those organizations you listed off have nothing to do with the Recreation Commission.
I understand that.
So, you know, and then there's the Boys and Girls Club, which is their own entity, which, you know, where, you know, have been in concert with or not concert with in various times during the year. Or during the, you know, last few years. It's a bit of a chicken egg thing, Dave. So, you know, yes, maybe there could be, you know, I think some of the programs that we have been trying to, or we have provided over the last few years, yes, the, the, the basketball programs, the youth program. We've run adult indoor soccer leagues. We have run ski, ski programs, which were, I don't think were youth. I, I could be wrong, but I think anybody could. We, we had a, we had golf lessons at Maynard Country Club, which again, we're not directed. So we're trying to come up with different things. And again, the challenge is just bandwidth and, you know, we were, you know, trying to kind of do one thing a season so that we weren't kind of over, you know, and also trying to figure out, okay, you know, what else, you know, it's not just about programs, it's also about, you know, putting funds towards the, the, you know, I, I don't think anybody, you know, the, the fields and the, and the, and the, and the facilities in, in town that if recreation can help, help make those better, that would be something we would be, you know, wanting to do as well. In terms of CPC, you noted, yeah, so noted. I, I understand that. And so, it's why.
They're gonna, you know, there's, there's, there's several things that I think that I've expressed this in public meetings before, where I believe that other communities get, get more stretch out of their CPC funds than Maynard does in many instances where there's a a tendency to be more conservative on how far we're, we're willing to to stretch the rules per se on CPC to fund certain things. That's a different discussion, but when you take, if we're gonna, if, if there's no voice for the recreation area on that group, some of those issues, and I'm not, I'm not being critical of you or of any of the other folks that are currently on the, the Recreation Commission. I'm, I'm just sort of babbling about, you know, a stream of consciousness here. I'm concerned about the future of what CPC will be doing if there's no voice for recreation.
Well, like I said, Dave, I mean, maybe it's just that there's a seat on the CPC and there isn't an actual Recreation Commission. I mean, that may be, that may be what the, the, the way to go. I don't want to see that happen.
Yeah, except, except that those that, that, you know, you have one member of, of however members are on the CPC, I think there's seven and, and, you know, then you've got people, you know, when the affordable housing issues come up, you've got somebody from the Affordable Housing Trust that's on there along with the, someone from the Planning Board along with, you know, and the votes go that way versus going in, in the other direction when a project comes up. And that's where the voice is lost. That's, you know, it's a political thing with voice gets lost and the projects, the projects may not even make it because part of the issue is also having a group that will, you know, advocate for certain projects. And I think you've done pretty well over the last several years of getting CPC funds for your projects. Steve obviously played a big role in that, in, in his voice on the committee and was able to garner support amongst the, the group on CPC. But just, you know, I don't know, I, I, I'm trying to envision what the future could be for a Recreation Commission. Whether or not we have to work with another community, if it's, whether it be Stowe or whatever and, or, you know, what do they have? What do some of these smaller towns that are more successful? You mentioned one and I forget already which one it was with a $400,000.
That is Shirley.
Shirley. God knows what they do with that, with that kind of a budget. I've, you know.
So I definitely think it's something that's part of a, you know, and, and I'm glad, I thank Jim and the rest of, of the Commission members for coming on. And again, I'm sorry that of the oversight of not having you post the meet, not having you guys post a meeting too. But what I think is that you've given us all something to think about. And I'd like to do some background, like, like I said, to figure out if you can have associate members, if that's a, if that's a thing that you can do. You know, kind of give you some support in the meantime. You know, I know that I had talked to, I thought I had sent it to Denise, but, but it didn't, COVID happened and whatnot. But the possibility of having, you know, if senior workers want to do, if you have a senior worker that wants to be an admin. You know, I, I think I had, I reached out to Amy Lovelace and to find out if that's something that could qualify for the tax work-off program. You know, I'm not saying that we can't, we're not going to give you money, but I'm just trying to figure out all different aspects of, you know, obviously recreation is an important part of, of our town in general, is an important part of life. So, you know, if there's a way to kind of make it work some way with giving you guys some support, you know, I'd love to see how to make that happen.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gazza.
Yeah. One of the things I think in this conversation, we keep mentioning CPC. I think that's sort of forgotten and I'll give you a figure to give you an example. They've spent on debt alone, including interest through twenty-one, one million, one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. That's a lot of projects you could have bought.
For, for what CPC?
Yeah.
The golf course?
Yeah, that's just the debt alone since FY14 to the end of twenty-one. That's a lot of money. So I mean, in the conversation, that's one of the things you got to look at is that we've spent a lot of money just on debt that we haven't even, that you could have been using it, you know, if you had. I mean, that's a lot of projects, a lot of projects for recreation, for a whole bunch of things. I mean, I'm not defending anybody, but you know, I'm looking at the number and I'm saying, that's not a small number.
No, absolutely not. I appreciate, I, thanks, Mike. Thanks for, for letting us know. Yeah. So, so I think that maybe if you can give us, you know, some, you know, some time to kind of think about it. I know Budget Subcommittee is going to meet. I, I know the budget's still in flux. And we will come back in a, you know, in a month or so, revisit and we'll both post the meetings. So therefore everyone can talk. Does that sound like a, does that sound like a plan to you?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be helpful to have a meeting where we can, again, it's hard, obviously it's hard not to have face-to-face meetings, but I think I appreciate you allowing me on, Justine, and, and, and letting us kind of, you know, talk about where we're at. And, you know, it kind of is what it is. And, and, and yeah, I think that would be a good next step.
Great. All right. So I will, I will follow up with Greg and try to get the answers to the other questions that I had. And does anyone else have any questions for Jim before I let him leave? All right. Then I'll be in touch. And again, I'm sorry for the miscommunication.
All right, Justine, thanks. And thank you, everybody. Have a good night, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Barry. All right. All right. Let us, let's head. Item number twelve. So there are three motions. So do you want, so should we do the discussion first and then do the motions?
I recommend you do discussion first just because of the topic in particular.
Okay.
Two conclusions.
No worries.
We usually have to read the motions before we do the discussion.
Discussion. Kate?
You do usually, but I didn't know what you wanted to do in this case.
So these are, you know, sort of really parliamentary procedure questions and you don't have to be so formal. So it's really what your tradition is that you typically follow, but you don't have to. So the rules are that you, you have a motion, you have a second and then discussion can happen, right? I mean, that's the parliamentary rules, but many, many communities in their boards of selectmen, select boards are a little looser and they can have a discussion because it's not a public hearing here. We're just having a meeting. So, you know, it, it's really your preference. If you do decide to go the route of the motion, it doesn't indicate that you're actually going to approve. The HCA just opens up the discussion. It's a procedural tool.
Okay. All right. So why don't we, I'm good with the discussion first just because we've got three, three separate motions. And what I'll do is after the second, I'll open up for any additional discussion that way before we vote on it. So, Greg, do you want to start us off?
So just as a reminder, this, and this is referenced earlier in the meeting. So this is a proposal for the business known as Sugarloaf, Sugarloaf Maynard LLC, represented by Flavio, and I'm trying to remember her last name, but it's not coming to my head.
Hungaro.
Yep, thank you. So, so, and as, and as you also referenced, the proposal was to have it jointly housed, but in different part of the building of twenty-five Nathan Street Art Specialties on the back. And if we recall a couple of weeks ago, when, when, when Flavio first came and, and asked for the board's consideration to, to allow, to authorize the Town Minister's Office to negotiate the host community. There was, you know, concept pictures. We were talking about the entrance ways. We're talking about what the, what the vision for the, where the business is going to be. And so the board had, had authorized the Town Minister's Office to, to negotiate this host community agreement. So we've done that and we're coming back to the board. And this is the, the same standard, so to speak, host community agreement that we've had with the other recreational marijuana establishments that we have already in town. So the terms are the same.
Okay.
So I, I would, I would, I want to ask if Assistant Town Administrator Megan Zamudo has anything to add or, or maybe Town Council Kate Federoff, but Megan, do you have anything to add?
I'm sure, you know, I think the first motion, as you pointed out, Greg, is the Host Community Agreement with Sugarloaf. And yes, this is a similar agreement that we've done with previous companies. The second one is for the board to, to authorize the chair to sign the certification form. That typically goes along with the Host Community, Community Agreement. That's not really anything new. But I want to mention that the third But I want to mention that the third one is a virtual, to authorize a virtual web-based public outreach meeting. And that's what the Cannabis Control Commission is doing now, um, in times of COVID. They want to make sure that the towns are comfortable, um, with a company using Zoom or, you know, another virtual platform to get feedback and present to the community. So that's, that's probably the one document here, um, that's new, that, um, we hasn't come through with other applicants. It might have with one before, but it, it's fairly new in these recent times.
If I may ask a question, and I think it goes to Kate, actually. The last time we met on this topic, um, there was a, just a bunch of discussion from several members of the board saying that we have other opportunities to, to, um, you know, a bite, another more bite, it's bites at the apple. Can you confirm that this is the final bite at the apple?
So.
For the board, for the board of select.
For the Board of Selectmen. So, so you have, this is the bite of the apple where you have the most discretion, right? Because this is the moment where you decide, do I, as a willing party, want to negotiate a contract? It's essentially, it's a public contract, but a contract between two individuals here, Town of Maynard and this entity. And that really, you have a lot of discretion to say no. The other bite of the apple that you all have as, um, Board of Selectmen is the license piece. That theoretically is, is subject to appeal. You'd have to file some sort of like writ of certiorari or something like that to do that because it's not statutory, it's through your bylaw. But, you know, it, that is bound by more of the arbitrary and capricious standard. Whereas the courts have said that on the HCAs, it, no one can force two parties to contract. So here's where you have the most discretion. Now, the other boards that these folks have to go to is obviously, um, Bill's Board. And, um, that's also statutorily constrained. So the board looks at certain things. They say, can we condition around the impacts that are created by this, um, type of use? And, um, it's appealable to obviously Land Court or Superior Court, um, if they deny it. So.
The time, excuse me for interrupting, but at the time that it goes to the Planning Board, basically that I used this phrase the last time and it sort of got pushed back on, the train is running. And the opportunity to stop that train is really limited relative to the town's ability to, the town as a whole's ability to act. Is that accurate?
The train is running for sure. Um, and I'm not saying that you can't be successful in denying a special permit, but you have less discretion to deny a special permit than you do in HCA.
Yeah. And that's the point that I'm getting at is that I think there was a lot of discussion the last time this board met on this topic. And there was a lot of questions that people had. And the only sense I got, and maybe I'm, maybe my sense was wrong, but that there were people saying, well, there might be, that we have other opportunities, that's at least move the process along. And in my eyes, now we haven't heard from the applicant tonight, so I don't know. In my eyes, nothing has changed. Nothing has changed relative to my concerns. And I'll speak, speak to the board now with this comment, but nothing has, has changed relative to my concerns about waiting to see what the impacts are of businesses, that similar businesses that have not opened yet. Not saying no to anybody at any time. This can always continue to be, to wait and see what happens with what has already been approved. But nothing has changed since the last time we met. And as I expressed at that meeting, the train was running then because here we are at the next stop on the train. And this is the last stop before we move along to how you described it, where our discretion is gone. Or unlimited.
Actually, thank, thank you, David. Thank you for, uh, for pointing those, those items out. Um, I did want to actually ask a question of, of Flavia. That during the last meeting, uh, there was, there was a, there was, or I left it a little bit confused as far as the actual plan of where the actual marijuana facility is going to go in the building. And do you have, is that nailed down now?
Um, I've been working with, uh, Tim. Um, I don't know if we have any drawings. I don't know if it's necessary to, to show it today, but we've been, um, we've decided to have those three doors, uh, in the front. And, uh, Sugarloaf is going to be on the left side separately from, um, our specialties. So that's going to be a completely different entrance. So we didn't have any access at all to, um, the, the specialty store.
Right. Okay. Okay. I just wanted to double check. I know that there was talk about the basin and then there was the, the street level. So I just wanted to clarify where it was, where it was going to go. So when we're, when we're approving this, Kate, um, do, correct me because it's been a little while since we've approved one of these. Do we need to know where it's going to go? Or is that the license?
So, you know, and this is one of the things that's unique about, um, Flavia's business is that it doesn't have, it, tell me this, Walter, does it have a suite?
What do you mean?
Like, does it say like, so for example, my office building on 730 Main Street, but I'm Suite 1F. And there are 10 other suites in that same building. So does it have a, a location where we could define it with a floor plan connected to that location?
As for purposes of licensing, the license describes what the premises is. So you have a whole building and it describes, now as to numbering.
And it's a diagram or a, or schematic?
It's a schematic. So if you have to, in the same relates to the Planning Board. You have to provide site plan, you have to provide the floor plan, everything as to how it's actually going to fit into the building.
Right. I guess what their concern is now is, so obviously that has to unfold. And site plan has a lot to do with to the exterior and all that stuff. So, I mean, for right now, today on December 1st, do you have just a floor plan with the footprint?
And I think Tim may speak to that, but to go back for the chair's purpose, to go back to the meeting, I think there was discussion as to whether to have it in the front of the building or the back of the building, the entrance. And I believe it was going to be left up finalized with the plan that we present, but the Planning Board was going to be the one to finalize the how they want it set up. And, and you, and correct me if I'm wrong, if that's, but I kind of remember that was part of the conversation. To go with the chair said, there was discussion as to whether it's going to be from the front of the building or the back of the building. And Tim presented a couple of different, uh, schematics for, for the board to look at.
Right. So, so I think that that's, and, and that's, I think, the source of the confusion here is just that, um, I, I don't know what I'm voting on because I, I don't know what it, what it is.
So, I actually want to echo what you're saying too, because I think the last time I agree with you, Walter, that there was a lot of dialogue and say, okay, listen, is it going to look like this beautiful park? Or are we going to worry about parking and maybe we'll leave that piece to the Planning Board? But that was before tonight. I, I didn't realize that you, because I thought there was this idea of a coffee shop and, and some, a whole bunch of other ideas floating around. So I thought the only thing we had finalized really was that we wanted a marijuana shop here. And so for me, it didn't matter, but now since we have competing businesses really established, I think it might be important to put a perimeter kind of of what we're looking at. So we can appropriately call it out in the HCA. And I'm sorry, I didn't really understand that piece about the liquor license. And, and Justine had emailed me earlier today, but I didn't realize that was tonight, same building.
It was something that was going to be coming up, but it wasn't before the, it wasn't before the board.
Yeah.
At the time.
Madam Chair, uh, Tim has, you hear Flavia, if you'd like, if you think it'd be helpful, I've got a plan up on my screen and I think I can probably share that for the group.
Would that be helpful, Kate?
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
Okay, Flavia, that's all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, um, it's important to understand that this is, uh, currently proposed. And, uh, I don't think there's anything about this that is, um, you know, sort of cavalier or accidental. But at the same time, it, it's not yet final. There are a small number of important, um, little geometric configurations that we're navigating, uh, between, uh, myself for Flavia's business and Arts Architect for his distinct business, uh, and for his obligations as the, as the landlord. So with those, with those, um, qualifications, I'm happy to sort of walk you through. And this is, um, a little bit less user friendly. You'll recall at our, our, the last time we were together in this, in, over the subject matter, we had, you know, kind of rendered shadowed, three-dimensional drawings. But, um, for the folks from town, I think you'll recognize that, uh, if you can follow my cursor, this is the Nathan Street facade of 25 Nathan, the former Bank of America building. And, uh, everybody may recognize this sort of recessed entry niche. That existing entry will remain and it will be in service only of the art specialties area, which will occupy the southern half. If you think of the building as a long slender building that stretches from east to west, arts will occupy the southern half of the second or the, the grade, uh, floor from Nathan Street. Sugarloaf will, uh, on the frontage will occupy about a third on the northern half. The, um, new entry we're proposing here will occupy what we call the rough opening currently, um, filled with window. So the, all of the brick aspects of the facade remain in place, but window will be removed and replaced with this pair of doors and, and a window to, to complete the spandrel there. So you can see we moved through some security procedures here through a kind of preliminary area identified for pre-order kiosks. Flavia can get into a little bit more operationally, how those work. If, if folks are interested, then there'll be a kind of a, um, more primary arrival space here in the back, which will have a kind of, uh, consultancy counter on, uh, the south side and a more direct kind of product pickup, uh, counter to the north side. And then all of the rest of this is back of house and then egress, uh, and bathroom space. So, uh, some of these partitions right here are new, uh, which is to say we're not present in the Bank of America building. And, um, the, the, um, the things being worked out right now primarily have to do with, the way the building code refer, regards, um, the occupants obligations to, the code, uh, given the change of use. The bank had one set of obligations and now as a pair of mercantile uses in what, what I still, I, I believe is still technically regarded as mixed use because it's, uh, two tenant spaces. It's a different set of obligations having to do with egress, um, bathrooms, uh, uh, fire safety and things like that. So, um, I don't think we're all that far away from it. Uh, and I am hopeful that the impact to the floor plan will be, very minor. I think it's fair to say this is, this is what Flavia is, uh, hoping to build. But, but I don't want to, I think it'd be misrepresenting it to, to assert that, uh, every little aspect of it is worked out and resolved. It's, it's not quite yet there.
So for Tim, for my purposes, and I, I don't, I'm not, um, I'm not speaking to anything David said, that those are policy decisions with the board. But for my purposes, um, I think, well, you can't see me pointing, so that's stupid. So if you, I don't care what the interior looks like. I mean, I, I, for me, that's planning stuff unless the board wanted to delve into that. So I don't care where your entrance is. I don't care where your parking is. But for the purposes of calling it out in the HCA, what I'd probably like to do is take this schematic and have Unit A, which is, and I don't, I don't know if that's north or west or whatever, where art is, and have Unit B, um, be where Flavia's floor plan is. And it wouldn't have to be a floor plan. It could just be a, a simple outline of the perimeter of what piece she's leasing. And I think that would work for calling out the location.
Something like, um, if I may, if you look at this little kind of diagram up there.
Yep. Yep. Exactly like that, except for just in a, a single sheet.
Okay.
So I think.
Madam Chair, I think, um.
Call it out that way. Sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, Kate, Madam Chair, I think what the chief has said, um, that, you know, for my purposes, the postal service creates the address of the property. So the property address according to the postal services is, is 25. Within that, the town has the ability to separate out that space by, by saying, okay, it's 25, but it's 25A and 25B.
Right.
But for purposes of a postal address, they're all 25.
Right. I, I think the thing is for the purposes of the HCA, we need to know what it is. So, you know, whether it ends up being, you know, we're going to renumber it at some point down the line or it remains A and B is, is what, but as far as if they're going to, if, if there's going to be an HCA approved tonight, we need to know what that differentiation is.
Right, Walter. And what I wasn't saying is like, make it the street address 25A, 25B or whatever. I, I mean, just, it would be 25A and then it would be a comma, Unit A or Unit 1 or Unit.
Right. That's exactly right. And I, I think I'd like, you know, for purpose, I, it'd probably be better off to have the chief talk about how they do that in town. So we're following the same.
But Kate, your, your point, Kate, your point isn't about the public safety aspect or anything like that. It has to do with delineating a specific location for the use in a potential, uh, community host agreement. That's it.
That's right. That's, that's, that's exactly what my concern is not, um, as I said, that I don't, I don't, me personally, I don't care if it's, you're coming in on Nathan or you're coming in off the parking lot or, um, where you put, you know, how, how you quantify it. I want that schematic to say it's 1,200 square feet and it's in this space, you know, or whatever it is.
And Tim, can, can, Tim, can you confirm, uh, for, for certainty from looking at that? It wasn't clear that there is absolutely zero shared space between those two particular, uh, locations? They don't have any open doors that lead to the same, uh, are they completely separate from one another?
Right now, the way we're representing it is that they have a common exit, uh, egress to the, um, to the east. So as, as the discussion unfolded a little bit earlier on, several of us made the note that we'll need to be cautious about how these things work. And there may need to be, um, you know, the CCC may have some guidance on this, um, in particular, but we'll need to be certain that this exit door does not provide ingress or access to, uh, somebody either coming from the rear or potentially coming from arts. So the, the way the circulation is identified and configured, it's, it's, um, it's called access and egress. And, uh, you know, there'll need to be some sort of provision. I can't tell you what the details of that will be to prevent access through the egress.
We have our security consultant online as well who can explain the requirements on, on keeping the premise secure from any access.
So, um, so Kate, it looks like you have something to say first.
So, so, and I'm just, I, I mean, it's small on my screens, I have to say. So, so it, it looks to me like that, that door you just pointed. So, so it looks to me like that, that door you just pointed to, Tim, is a door where there's shared toilets and bathrooms, I should say. So, so meaning I go out from my space in my marijuana store and I go into the hallway to the bathroom, which is a common bathroom. And same thing with arts store, I go to get my specialty food and I go into the common hallway. But this egress, I mean, that can't be a shared space where people are traveling in and out because you need to have the customers in marijuana store only going into the marijuana store. And they can't be meandering from the marijuana store to the specialty food store. So it's hard for me to see on this schematic.
Yeah, it's understood. I think, you know, the best way to explain where we are at the present is to say that the submission for the arts project went ahead last week prior to their having coordinated with us. So there's a number of interactions that need to be resolved. So the architect designing this space has represented a door out from their space into a space here that's a little bit in conflict at the moment with what our needs are. So it's, it's to be resolved. And you can see by my excluding a door here, it doesn't mean to suggest that there won't be access, simply that where they had proposed it doesn't work for us. So we're pushing it back.
Is there a requirement for a marijuana store to have a bathroom?
It's not about marijuana. It's about, we'd be in a mercantile use group and we need restrooms for employees only. And that will depend on our quantity of staff. So there is a possibility that we may not be required to have bathroom at all. But at the moment, we, we have just assumed that it would be best practice to provide a bathroom so that Flavia is not limited to an especially small staff.
So, but for customers, because it's, we're worried not about staff being able to. We're worried about customers, isn't that correct?
So there's, there's no customer requirement for any mercantile use.
Right.
At least not of our, of our scale. We wouldn't be large enough to require that.
And so, and now to Kate, then the question is, is that what the main concern is about the connection between the two halves of the building? If there's no connection for the customers, if you can lock it off there before the bathroom, does that alleviate the concern? Or is it that staff has access between the two spaces as well?
So I, God, that's really getting into security that I'm just not 100% sure on, to be honest. But, you know, my, I, the marijuana establishment has to be completely secure so that there's no diversion. So for example, I'll tell you something I do know. You can't have a delivery, a shared delivery opening. You know how you have the, I don't know what they're even called, but it's almost like a garage bay where you can.
Loading.
Loading docks.
Loading dock, exactly. Thank you. You can't have a shared space like that. So it worries me a little bit that it would be better for me, honestly, if this bathroom space did not connect. I mean, and they would, I don't know exactly.
Madam Chair, I think if you look at the bathroom space, it's more than, I mean, and I agree with Tim with the way the design. The, this space serves two purposes. It's the second means of exit out of the, out of both spaces, which is a requirement for the building code. So, so the bathrooms, you know, that's something that has, that may have to be adjusted. And each bathroom be put into the separate locations and not have common bathrooms.
But I actually, my question, so, but it's interesting because if they share an egress, which I do agree that obviously both, both buildings, both units should have an egress. If they share an egress, is that like sharing a loading dock?
Yeah, I mean, I would have thought that you would have had to, this is digging in deeper than I have in terms of, of design, but that you would have had, you obviously need two exits for fire safety purposes, right? So, but I would have thought, and I don't know how this building works, but you would have to bust out two doors out of the back so that it's not shared at all.
Well, I would disagree with that in the sense of that is locked, is the bases have, the spaces have to be separate and distinct. And you, and this relates to the liquor business as well. So it has to be secured to ensure people can't come in. The question comes up to be, I understand we had Kate above the loading dock. I still, I don't necessarily think, you know, it wouldn't be a shared loading dock. But the question goes to Flavia, what's the plan for how product is being delivered?
So that we're probably going to be using the back door. And that's not finalized yet. I would have to have another meeting. We haven't gone that far in terms of security plans. But probably from the back, depends really on the timing of delivery.
So. So in theory, though, you could be getting a delivery for your marijuana while someone from Art Specialties is walking down the same steps.
We'll coordinate with the hours of operation so we don't have such conflict.
Or potentially we'd have to put another door in that would allow direct access for delivery.
You would absolutely have to put out another door. You could not have other people waiting in that, you know, as a security plan.
Right. That whole thing would require, that whole hallway would have to be, have security cameras everywhere. And there's a requirement that when the product is being delivered, from when it comes out of the truck till it's actually being accepted, all has to be on video cameras. Showing, you know, it's showing the delivery. It has to be re waved. So potentially we might have to put, without, I haven't been to the building. Without having been to the building, we potentially might have to put another door or take deliveries through the front door on, during off hours.
So real quick, Chief, do you have any, I realize that I'm not sure if you've seen, there's, but there has been a little bit of a security plan. I'm not quite sure how much further you've seen or if you have anything about it.
Yeah, I mean, I have a lot of concerns. Yeah, I don't know where exactly anything's being done. There's a lot of proposals. But until the physical structure is solidified or, you know, how everything's already done, I can't really, you know, comment that, you know, again, a lot of concerns that would have to be addressed. You know, again, that back part where somebody could be in the bathroom and walk out of the bathroom with somebody making a delivery, that just is unacceptable.
And it can set up, you can set up, you can set up the robbery that way.
Well, I mean. Yeah, well, it's just, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't fit a security plan because it's not secure. Especially if from another business, somebody could just leave the other business because I don't know what specialties, if they're going to be using the back door either, or is it just employees? I don't know what the other use of the building is. So there would be a lot of concerns and that would have to be addressed. And again, the two businesses have to be completely separated and I can't see employees sharing anything. You know, because like you said, it not only has to be security cameras for everything, but there's got to be, you know, alarm set, you know, you know. I can't tell on this where the vault would be, where we're in, you know, conjunction, anything would be.
And, and I think that gets flushed, I apologize, Madam Chair, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. Go ahead.
If you don't mind, that gets flushed out during the whole process dealing with the state on licensing as well as getting a security plan that the chief feels comfortable with signing off on.
Well, so that's where I actually, that's where I actually don't necessarily agree. So, you know, I think this is, this is, well, actually I'm delving into policy here, but this is where it becomes an issue where you have a shared building, you know. So, so all of our buildings in Maynard have been standalone. Most of my buildings in my other communities are standalone. But if they weren't, it was really a super defined space. So they had like a strip, imagine a strip mall with like a separate unit. And you have both in, you know, both exits, separate unit, separate unit, two exits. So that's, that's actually more complicated than I thought. I didn't know there was going to be a shared.
Kate, most spaces, you're right, contain, they might all be in one building, but the entrances and exits are all separate and distinct.
Right.
Yeah. And so that may redesign it in such a way that have another exit going out the side of the building to, for that purposes. But, but there've been a number of, and there are some cannabis businesses that do share common space to get out of the building, but the deliveries are done through another door. You have Patriot Care, you have Patriot Care in Boston for one, for example.
Right, but it's like you come into the building into a hallway and that's when, then you go into your unit and that's where your security begins, right?
Right.
This is a little bit different because it's not like that. I don't care what your box looks like, but your box has to be separate.
Right.
Doesn't have a full box. It's got a three quarters box.
Right. The entrances are separate and distinct. But the concern you have is the, is the, is the common space in the back.
Yeah.
Well, I think there should, there should be clear separation between the two of them, exits and entrance and should be separated. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be a common exit.
And we, and Tim, Tim, can you do a design that would do that?
Absolutely, yep.
May I speak?
Sure. Who am I speaking with?
My name's Rick Nagel. I'm the security consultant with Sugarloaf. I'm working with Flavia. What I would suggest is absolutely nothing should be shared, in my opinion. And I've done these many times, that button shouldn't be shared with anyone. The entrance should be standalone. The exit should be standalone. We can rectify that. I've had buildings where they're shared like this one. We can rectify it long as no one shares anything. It should be a separate entity, even though it's in the same building. We can secure that, but we just don't want anyone to cross over and come over. In the rear, if the deliveries are there, again, we're going to do it off peak hours. There'll be a minimum four people that will be there. The door they come in should only be used for Flavia's establishment and no one else.
Exactly.
Entrance and exit to that.
We're on the same page then.
And, and that's what it always is. This is just, this is something we can rectify real quick with Tim. But this is how all the buildings are. No one crosses over at all. And that goes for the bathroom. Everyone stays to themselves.
Though I just have to ask real quick, and I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that, Rick. But, so if you feel that way and you're the security person for Sugarloaf, why, why is this the plan that we got?
Yeah, well, I didn't see this end of it, to be honest with you. This is, when I looked at this, I did not see this. And that's something that if I did, I would have rectified it right away.
Okay.
If I may, so I've been working with Tim on the project and we are waiting to see if we're going to get to the HCA point. So we can move ahead and making, you know, new plans, adjustments, correct. So everything like Tim said, it's not finalized. And we're not even honestly, you know, it's a beginning communication among us. And this project wasn't supposed to be, you know, of the floor plan. It's not a presentation that we are planning to do today. So actually I have a meeting scheduled with Rick Nagle and we are going to go over this next to finalize the project that you're seeing tonight. So I didn't understand that for the HCA purpose, they would have to go through this process. And I apologize for, you know, not having, communicating with, with the security consultant for this matter. But that was the next step.
Okay, yeah, I think that, I'm trying to remember the other, again, it's been a little while since the other two HCAs have been signed, but I kind of feel like we had more of a concrete plan with the HCA. And that's, and that's why, and I'm sorry if we didn't behave that with you.
But this is a unique justine because it's a shared space. And that's the reason why we're having this, you know, confusion. But at the same time, I think once you create that separation, there shouldn't be a confusion because you have to create a separation. That's all, you know, separate entrance and separate exits and nothing shared.
That's correct.
Because, because you also have the space in the middle too, because you still have some space in the middle between the two entities. So there should be a clear separation. There shouldn't be a problem doing that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just, you know, for purposes of the, of the architectural plan, not only does it have to be approved by the planning board, but it also has to be approved by the Cannabis Control Commission to ensure it meets all their security concerns. So we have to go through an architectural review with the Cannabis Control Commission as well as the planning, as well as the chief of police and as well as the fire chief.
Right. And I appreciate that. And I know that. It's just more that the place that we have the control is tonight. So if we move it forward tonight, this is, this is where, this is us deciding that this is a good enough plan and we're going to move it forward. So, and then just decide whether or not someone else is going to decide that it's not or whatnot.
Well, I think I somewhat disagree with Kate in the sense of, I, the train has left the station and I think Kate would agree is that, but by no means does it mean that the train's making it all the way to the end. Although, although you vote for the HCA and move it forward, still as the licensing authority, that doesn't require you to agree. And I'll give you an example in the sense of, in the city of Taunton, they executed a host community agreement. But the planning board denied the special permit. It's now pending in the land court because the planning board had issues because it was located in a neighborhood. And the licensing, who's the city council, is having the same type of issue with the licensing. Because they said, and they were, and they were the host community authority because neighbors came forward and said, wait, but this isn't right. You're putting it, you're putting it in a neighborhood, not in, in the area of where businesses are located in town.
That's not, that's not the greatest example though, Mr. Sullivan, because, you know, I don't want to go to land court.
No, no, but, but, but I have to give you the full story. And I've had other cases in Cambridge in which a host community agreement was given and the planning board denied the special permit. That did not get appealed.
Yeah, but I, my point is going back to the original comment at, with the beginning of this little session is that we don't have to put it into the hands of the planning board at this point if we're not comfortable. This is our opportunity where we have extreme, you know, leverage from our side or that's the wrong word, but extreme authority to make a decision that we're saying we, we're not ready for this on what's been presented.
Right. And with all due.
That's tonight, after tonight, then it goes to another board that's outside of the elected officials.
With all due respect, it was my understanding when we had our last meeting with the board, the, the board was comfortable with the idea of having a cannabis retail establishment located there and voted three to two to move forward with a host.
I respectfully disagree. I think what I heard from some of my colleagues was let's move the process forward because we have another chance to discuss whether or not this is the proper place and thing to do.
Okay, so that's, that's fine. So let's, so I think I heard through all this. Greg, did you have something to weigh in on?
Well, I only, but I only to kind of reflect what a lot of you already said and kind of what David already said and you said as well, Madam Chairwoman, is that, is that I also agree that this is probably the opportunity for the board to add terms or conditions to the host community agreement they would like. One of those terms or conditions, and Kate can correct me if this is too far, would be to specify the board's preference of a policy. And so Kate doesn't like to recommend policy. I don't mind recommending policy. And, but that policy could be to make it very clear and distinct that there are distinct entries or access and egresses and separate facilities to whatever level specificity we would like to have distinguished between the two entities, although they're sharing four walls of the building. And yes, the envelope is the same, but the interior has to have completely separate. And if we, if we're uncomfortable, meaning the board with the stairwell and the bathrooms, I think we, you correct me if I'm wrong, Kate, but if we can get to that level of detail in the HCA to say like, no, no combined bathrooms, no shared spaces, no shared anything besides the four walls. I, I think now is the opportunity to take that, yes, is it in a way kind of getting into planning board territory? So be it. This is, this is not like a normal planning board thing.
But in a way, Greg, we think we're doing them a favor by making sure that they're prepared because going forward, they're going to be dealing with, you know. they're gonna be dealing with, you know, with with the Cannabis Commission and with the planning board and if there's not, all the ducks are not in order, it's not gonna happen. So I think we're doing them a favor by saying, you know, you know, and I agree with you. I think that if we are gonna approve this tonight, it has to have some, you know, stipulations in there that.
And ma- ma- Madam Chair, I would, I would not call that a policy um addition. I would call that, you know, given the situation of the building, to address the board's concern, they wanna make sure anything that goes forward that both entities are separate and distinct entities. So I I don't think that's a policy call. I think that's a call for the board to make in 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 e- in entering into a host community agreement.
I'm sure. Thank you. Okay.
That definition is already within the regulations of the CCC. So I think if if I wanna say we don't wanna approve something that we know is automatically gonna fail if it gets to the CCC or we don't wanna prove something that the CCC could pass, that they shouldn't be passing, which I I think is a very unlikely event. Is that what I'm gathering from my colleagues here?
We don't, we don't have to leave anything to the planning board. I I understand the planning board have, has their, their set of purviews and areas of, um, you know, responsibility. But if we as a board, the, of selectmen, I have, you know, we have the uh HCA in front of us and the contract and the, and all the other stuff that we're, we're looking at tonight, we can decide what we want and the planning board is left to deal with what's left. As far as I'm concerned, that's, that's why we're here. You know, by the way, we, we appoint the planning board and and then they become themselves and that's fine, but we, we can, we can put into this just like we could at one twenty-nine Parker or one twenty-nine Acton Street and any other project in the town of Maynard. You put into what we want. And then, you know, we do it contractually and other people have to work around our wishes. And to David's point, that is why we're here tonight, because the last time we were together, we did exactly what David said is we just voted to get to this point. And now we're at this point now is when, you know, we decide where we go from here, if we go from here and if we move forward. And the fact that we have an incomplete plan to Flavia's point at the beginning, well, we really weren't ready because we weren't finished. Well, why are we here if we're not finished? It almost ten o'clock at night by the time we get done with this conversation. If we weren't ready, we shouldn't be here. And that means, you know, I mean, we've been pretty clear about the safety and the security since day one in in all of these conversations with every marijuana business and company we've come in. That was the biggest hang up on the, the other one on Nation Street. Access, egress, you know, joint areas, the whole thing.
So I I guess a quick question, um, Chris, I'm gonna jump in and interrupt you. My apologies.
Go ahead.
Um, but do we have, so there's no motion on the table to approve, we have not made the motion for the HCA tonight yet. Um, do we have other clear items we want added that we can direct Kate to um work with Walter um regarding the HCA? Obviously, the standalone that in egress, no shared space, um, that, you know, I'm I'm essentially thinking almost like a, almost like a strip mall, but within the same envelope of a building, you know what I'm saying? You know, the two buildings. But does, um, does anyone else have anything to add to that?
I think what you wanna add possibly is how, how can you prevent compromise from one unit to the next? For instance, um, twenty-five A to twenty-five B, for an example, that means walls and so forth and so on. How do we secure that? If someone breaks into the liquor store and they're in the liquor store, um, how do we prevent compromise to go into twenty-four B being Flavia's establishment? And I think that's easy enough to address and we can address all that, if that makes you feel comfortable.
Okay. Um, I I personally would like a, um, and I don't know, again, um, Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, but have we had plans before, before, you know, when we have the H, when we sign the HCA, do we have the typical plan of what the building is gonna look like? It's been a while.
But I mean, I think we had sort of, um, what are they, just schematics. They're not
Right.
plans as if you would submit fully engineered plans to to a planning board, you know, with um fully, fully um scaled out and all that stuff. But we've definitely seen schematics. The difference here and the trick is here, the shared space, because my understanding from last time was that the other pieces were gonna fall into place once the marijuana place was established. So I was unclear that there was going to be a liquor store and that was the plan. Um, and maybe, maybe you all weren't clear either. I'm not suggesting otherwise, but, um, uh, you know, so that's, that's, now we know that's an existing condition, right? We gave that license tonight. So it's an existing condition that you have to deal with and I think it's important for us to deal with in the HCA. So um, I guess I'm hearing from you guys total and complete physical separation of the two units, a di- a better descriptor of the units um in the location. And um that total physical separation will include no shared spaces, no shared egresses or ingresses. Um, and other than that, I don't know if there's anything else that you all are thinking of.
Ma- ma- Madam Chair, if I may, the only question I I may have on that is, you know, we changed the space so there's an exit for deliveries and so forth and the bathrooms are all within the premises. I just don't know based on the size of the building and from the chief, if we're, we still may be required to have that back door for purposes of emergency for people to go down the stairs. I just don't know the answer to that. So, but for purposes, it would be a self-contained facility where all deliveries and so forth would come into the space and well as all bathroom use would be in the space. But potentially you may have to have that emergency exit door going down those back stairs.
Well, couldn't you use the emergency exit door being the delivery door that you've now?
I think so, but I, but that would be something with the fire chief to make, because there's a part of the emergency issue was relating to the size of the space. Those two exits should be enough, given how, given, given the building is not that big, but I would defer to the chief to make sure.
Walter, if I may, I mean, it's not just a matter of the fire chief. We've got egress codes to deal with, we've got deliveries to deal with. Um, the, the, the existing entry in the, in the back, um, we can't look at this through one lens and I think, you know, what we've learned, what the, the Sugarloaf team needs to take from this meeting tonight that we failed to coordinate and we cannot fail to coordinate at any other step in the future or we're dead in the water in Maynard.
Yeah, I think that if you're dead in the water anywhere, because we're, we're really just trying to do our due diligence here to, you know, make sure to protect our town. So.
I mean, I don't necessarily think we did anything, Tim. I think the idea was, we came up with an idea, we had no plans, we as, as other plans, we had schematics of what it was potentially gonna look like, but we didn't have specific plans. And I think as Kate said, the distinction here is because, and and I would argue that it's irrelevant that it's a liquor store. It's the fact that it's sharing space with somebody else. It just so happens a liquor store.
Yeah, we know about it because it's a.
Right, right. But but there was gonna be another business there no matter what. The distinction in this compared to the other ones you did is that the others all had separate and distinct entrances and exits. Not any common space, correct, Kate?
That's, that's, that's the real trick here. So I think um, we can probably iron this out and um certainly the language is easy enough and if Tim can coordinate. And like I said, I don't care what your doors look like. I don't care what kind of trees you plant for the purposes of the HCA. Um, but I do care that there's a full and complete separation and that the units are clearly defined.
I mean, and and I think that's easy to add a paragraph or two specifically saying that is part of the host community agreement that the spaces must be separate and distinct egresses in exits. It's gonna be entrance and egresses, have to be separate and distinct and no use of common space for that.
Right.
Madam Chair, would you agree?
Yes, but then I think you just contradicted yourself by saying at some point you might have to share the space going down the stairs.
No, and I don't.
Sure that, that that's understood is we're saying, no, you can't.
And I.
Gotta figure that out.
I, I don't know if Tim can answer that question.
I, I think we're getting to a level of, of the actual negotiations now. So Madam Chairwoman, I recommend that, that I think Kate has her marching orders. And I, and I recommend that you don't have to do the motions. So if if the board would like to just leave it at, we go back to negotiating and then we'll come back to you when parties are ready, like, and, and, you know, you know, that's it.
And and I I would point out too that, that, go ahead, go ahead, Armin.
I said to, to David's point earlier, I mean, I think you missed an opportunity tonight. Um, I I think you, you, you should have been prepared for, for, for tonight. Known exactly what the building looks like, known exactly, you know, what the businesses are gonna be. Uh, I was anticipating that I was gonna be able to see a, a presentation uh about the clear separation between the businesses. And when I see the schematic, to me, I was confused myself. I said, you know, there's no way that you're gonna have the same egress in the back, you know, you, you know, using, uh, the two businesses using it together. So I'm, I'm a little surprised that it wasn't a better preparation for tonight's meeting. That's just.
And 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 my, my final comment is I wanna point out that despite the fact, as Chris pointed out, we had a lengthy, lengthy discussion and debate. We never really got into the issues, some of the other issues that I have with this proposal that are outside of the schematic of the building relative to the uh, the way it affects our downtown and whether or not it's time to approve this seat, uh, this community host agreement. And that's a different discussion entirely. I may be alone with my thoughts, but that's a, we didn't even touch it.
Right.
And that's still another discussion.
Right. So we can have that discussion where we actually have it on the, uh, on the next, on whatever agenda we will have coming up once Kate and and Walter work through the uh, the HCA.
Madam Chair, thank you for your time and I apolo- we apologize. We, there was miscommunication as to what we thought we had to do tonight. Um, and that's our fault. Uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll work on a plan with Kate uh that she'll feel comfortable with and we'll find out about the issue where I mentioned about the potential back door. If if we'd have to have that and if we have to have it, how, how we'll secure it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So, and I I I feel like the board members are kind of shaking their heads. Everyone pretty much agrees that this is, we'll give this back to Kate and Walter have them come back to us another time. Okay, all right. Um, thank you very much for your time, Flavia, Walter, Rick.
All my goodness. I'll see you next time.
Yep.
Thank you. Hi, guys.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And thank you, Kate, for all of your.
Thanks, Kate.
Uh, Kate, you go home now.
Not quite ten o'clock, so there you go.
I would, I would, I would think that we would have this as a separate, a separate meeting just because it's gonna take so much time.
It wa- I I'll consider that in the future, um, especially if, you know, there, if there are substantial concerns anyways.
I mean, to to David's point, you know, some of the concerns were raised last time. No one even touched on them tonight. You know, in in with, you know, that and doors and all the rest. I just think it it's gonna end up, you know, almost a whole meeting on its own, just to get through the, the HCA. You know, paragraph by paragraph and then the rest of the stuff that's still hanging out there.
Right. No, that's a, that's a good suggestion, Chris. I will, uh, I will probably take that and advise him. All right. And now we're gonna move to article third, uh, item thirteen, which is the Maynard Police Department. Hi, Chief.
How we doing?
What?
It was a long discussion to get nowhere.
Sorry.
It's progress, it's progress.
It is.
Yeah, no, I, I, I was having those same concerns as you were having, so I'm glad that it was tabled and it'll be, uh, worked on later.
Excellent. Good, good, good.
Um, okay, so, uh, I'm gonna, uh, talk about the goals and objectives. I developed these, uh, back in June. Um, as part of the contract, I have to develop yearly goals and objectives, uh, towards what, uh, the positives of of what the police department, uh, is doing. You all received the, the two documents that I created, uh, for this, uh, purpose. Uh, so I'm just gonna quickly go over, you know, the first goal, uh, at the time I created these was to, you know, uh, get the full staffing levels. It still had, not had a deputy chief, uh, the realignment of the department, uh, was approved, but we still needed to fill the positions, uh, have certain, there were retirements in between and promotions needed to, uh, occur. We have completed, uh, all of that. We are at full staff. We still have one on military leave and one, uh, out injured, but we are at full staff. So I mean, we're, we're working towards, uh, that and everybody's in their position and, uh, moving forward. So, uh, that was, that was one of the things that, you know, uh, probably for the first six months of the year, that's mostly what I was working on, uh, trying to get the positions filled and getting people, uh, where they should be. Um, along with the realignment, uh, that we did. And then after that, once people started going there, I started looking at where to put people, uh, what additional assignments, uh, the new community officer position where he's downtown with the parking authority, um, hiring a civilian, uh, for when Kyle, when, after Kyle gave his notice, uh, of retirement. That was negotiated prior in, in the last contract that that position would then revert to it, you know, to what the chief wanted. Uh, once Kyle retired, since he was in the position for that long. Um, I like to say that the restructuring and all of that, um, has reduced the budget. You know, it's, uh, this is the third year in a row I've been able to reduce the overtime budget. You know, our overtime budget went down again this year because of the restructuring and because of the, the less amount. Um, even, even the, uh, base pay went down. One significant increase was, uh, just because we hired a lot of, um, college graduates where that was not what was part of that. So that's part of the contract. But, uh, moving on towards goal number two, provide policies and procedures. I've always been the policy, uh, person on the department. And, you know, we use the best practices. We, uh, gone in when, um, the George Floyd incident happened. You know, we reviewed our policies and we added, you know, uh, although Massachusetts has never had um, training in chokeholds, so we don't have a policy to use chokeholds and everything. I felt it was clear that we should add that to our policies to ban chokeholds, uh, at the use of chokeholds to restrain, uh, people. Also added the duty to intervene. It was throughout, um, the, the policies that officers had a duty to do this, duty to do that, but not specifically a duty to intervene when another officer is using excessive force. So I felt that was also something that needed to be added to the policies, just so it's clear cut. When, you know, new officers are coming in, they know right away, uh, what is allowed, what isn't allowed. That's where some officers get into trouble where they just don't know and we wanna be clear on what they can and can't do and what they should be doing.
Chief, it looks like, go ahead, Joe.
The, those last two that you added, I believe, does that bring your department up in line with the eight can't wait proposal?
Yes, I, I could argue that we were already there, but putting those definitively as outlined, yes, that puts an eight can't wait.
Listen, all right, thank you.
Um, uh, and, you know, we are accredited and we remain accredited and we move towards a, a re-accreditation, which is in twenty twenty-one.
Do you find a question about the accreditation? Are those, um, standards or specification publicly available somewhere?
The, oh, uh, yes, if you looked onto the Mass Police Accreditation Commission, um, website, they will, there's an outline of all the standards that are, that are required for accreditation.
Anything more detailed? I don't, I, 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 you know, I, I haven't checked that in several months. I remember looking at it a while back, um, I think after we talked in the summer, but it it looked fairly vague to me. Do you know if there's a, a more detailed one that I'd be able to look at?
Um, it, maybe a misunderstanding. Are you looking for all the standards that the accreditation that we have to meet, the three hundred something standards? Yeah, they do have a list if if you go on it. I will email it to you.
Okay.
If you need, you know, that way you can look through of what the standard. There are, um, a hundred and fifty-seven standards, a hundred and fifty-nine, excuse me, and then ninety-eight that are, um, all that you have to have. And then depending on the size of your department, you can choose what are called optional standards. And then certain amount of optional standards percentage wise, you have to reach of the optional standards. Uh, we have eighty-three optional standards, but we're only required to have fifty-nine. But because we, uh, of all the things we do, we get, we've been certified, uh, accredited for eighty-three, so.
So there's, um, so there's X optional standards, you are required to have fifty-nine, you have eighty-three.
Yes.
Got it.
And then we have all the other ones that are required, you know, that we have to meet. Uh, and I will, I'll make a note of that, email you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next is provide community with highly trained and motivated officers at every level of the department. Um, I, I've always been very, uh, big into training. Uh, I think a lot of Massachusetts chiefs are as an attorney, you know, liability is always one of the concerns. You gotta think of like, what, what do people get sued at? For police departments, you know, the first one is excessive force, but the second one and the third one, a failure to train. For police departments, you know, the first one is excessive force, but the second one and the third one, a failure to train and failure to supervise. The failure to train and failure to supervise falls on the chief. There's no question on that, you know. If if that's an issue, that's that's him not not implementing it. So uh, I will never, you know. Uh, fault that because uh, I am always looking to train. We, I had a. Person that teaches at the FBI National Academy and he's in charge of the Connecticut State Police Academy. Come in last week and train all the new supervisors. Uh, and leadership qualities and uh, this, he's a nationally uh, now. And I I like his leadership style because he's also gonna come back and work and it's kind of a stepping stone. You know, I've been to leadership classes where they're very good, but then you kind of get fired up and then you kind of lose your steam because there's no follow up to it. There's no like uh, basically accountability. Are you doing what what I just taught you to do? Or what what we were uh, teaching and working on to do. So uh, we're working towards that. We have so many young offices that they're training, they're coming out of training, so they're gonna get their usual training, but we'll work on their training after they. Kind of put some of theirs into uh, their procedures, you know, they they have to go out and do a little bit of work. To uh, and build up that, and then we'll follow up with some uh, more training uh, on that. But they actually are gonna get that same leadership training in about six months. That way, when there's, there's no uh, separation of expectation between the uh, supervisors and the officers. Where they move, they know exactly what is expected and that. And they, and I've had uh, meetings with the supervisors and they are required to get their expectations from their offices and this. And then I have meetings with the offices of their expectations of myself and what I. Uh, moving towards the uh, promote police conduct that is responsive and sensitive to the needs of the community. Uh, this is probably the one that the public sees the most. Uh, you know, we're out in the community. I I had so many ideas and so many things I wanted to start at this point, but COVID kind of restricts us being out. Um, in a community during town events, during uh, things uh, of that nature. So we will uh, be doing more of that when when we have the ability to do that, but we're still trying to do that. We still. Are assisting other departments. Uh, we put in when the COVID thing first uh, occurred that we would help deliver supplies. Uh, groceries or any needs to high risk people, so they don't leave the house. And we still have that if 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 that's needed or any of that, you know. A full service department, you know, uh, obviously the crime and, you know, law enforcement part of the job isn't. Uh, a good chunk of our uh, time, so we have to do the community service part of our time. And I think uh, uh, the young officers are. Well on board with that philosophy of getting out and uh, in the communities. So uh, in in just to uh, backtrack, uh, I don't know if uh, anybody knows the police reform bill was passed by both the Senate and the House today. There's some things we disagree with and the the main thing is is uh, that, but depending on what the governor does. But when it provide training opportunities using creative methods with an emphasis on procedural justice, implicites use of force and de-escalation. We have been doing that for years, you know. Um, that is one thing, the Massachusetts, you know, we're ahead of the curve uh, and always have been. In our training, in our teachings, uh, that I've actually, you know, taught implicit bias, I've taught procedural justice and uh. You know, the de-escalation and that, we've we've had extensive trainings on on those type of things, so we'll continue to do that. And that's a lot of what uh, that, uh, you know, I I don't like to say, but a lot of that stuff is like buzzwords now. We've been doing that. Uh, for a while, so that's that's a that's a good sign that we we have been using best practices. And provide provide a strong sense of trust between the police and the community. Uh, the, you know, professional conduct, accountability, all of these things. Um, are definitely something that I have strived to uh, get. The officers, but also get the supervisors to make sure that they're accountable for their officers uh, actions on duty and that. Uh, again, that a lot of that falls back to their training. In in the time here, I think we have a real good uh, group of officers. And I think uh, everybody's kind of excited. It's 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 a. A a good time right now. Um, everybody's seems to be on the same page is. Lack of a better term and, you know, a lot of things is not, a lot of drama, there's not a lot of this, everybody seems to have the uh, same focus, so um, I look forward to it. So uh, if you have any questions on any of the uh. Any of the stuff we're doing or any of that.
Um, for the last two you mentioned, how are you defining um, or kind of measuring customer satisfaction in the community? I'm not sure how you would get a good handle on that.
Uh, some, some do like uh, I I know some departments have done like surveys and things like that. Um, I don't know if those really uh, representative. What I what I get, go back, is all the feedback I get from a lot of. Uh, calls that have been won. Uh, you'd be surprised how many people email myself or other uh, people on the department or tell that. And we get a lot of positive, positive feedback uh, from staff. That's just, and and a lot of it comes from just the little things they do. You know, just helping somebody with something and going out of their way. And that, I really try to emphasize that, you know. The deputy chief has been great with emphasizing that, get out of the car, help. If you see somebody, you see this, you know, a lot of your time doesn't have to, you know. You do that, a lot of times that's more than uh, you know, arresting somebody. It does more for the community, it does more for that, so. But it's 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 more of uh, it's a small community. I live here. So um, I hear the good and the bad, you know, you do get, you know, obviously people are upset at certain things or or that, but. Vast majority is overwhelmingly positive.
Anyone else have any other questions for the chief regarding those uh, goals and objectives?
Did you consider any objectives specifically related to the fact that this year is overlapping with the pandemic?
Uh, at the time I was doing these was, you know, uh, towards the early part of the uh, pandemic. And I didn't expect it to last this long, you know, I'll be honest with you. I I didn't, I, you know, I said, when. When it first, like when somebody said May, oh, this might last till August, I'll cut it, it's not gonna, you know, it's gonna, you know. And now that we're this far in, it it is, there's prob- I mean, I already have jotted down notes of working on stuff towards. This type of, you know, if something like this ever happens again, or something to this similar uh, as a goal uh, in the future, yes, but. No, I I, I didn't expect it to be this big or this long, I'll be honest. But we have. We, you know, we haven't dismissed it. We have been working towards it uh, every, everything we've done, you know, I've I've implemented four. Special orders that are still in effect until this is uh, done, so.
Anyone else? I wanted to, I actually want to commend you, chief, because um, you know, you have worked really hard to uh, make this a department. I mean. You know, I I've always been uh, proud of the Maynard PD, um, but you've worked hard to continue that. And um, I've seen the caliber of the officers that you're hiring, how you're trying to get them out of the community. Um, it is a hard time to get people out of the community because, you know, we're not supposed to actually be interacting that all that often. Um, you know, but I but I appreciate that and I really appreciate um. The amount of work that goes into the accreditation process. And um, and I am proud of the fact that Maynard is consistently working towards that and working towards their training. Um, so so thank you for that and thank you for always keeping the community in mind.
I appreciate, I mean, um, I talked to other chiefs and they don't have, you know, more name names, but they don't have the support that I have. Uh, from the board, from uh, the town, so, you know, I want to thank my, you know, send my appreciation. Uh, it couldn't, we couldn't work as good if if I didn't have the support of uh, so. But also the other department heads and the other departments in town, you know, I think I think we have a very, very good working relationship between all the departments in town.
Great.
Somebody else? I, two questions not related to goals, related to COVID and some of the emails that uh, we had back and forth earlier, just minor follow ups. I know if a business has a customer who doesn't wear a mask, they can ask you for assistance. What about a resident who notices that employees of a business are not properly masked?
That that that's something specific and we can go down and then that business can be fined or that business, if if. If they need, there's two, two things. If the business asks the people to leave and they don't leave and they're unmasked, now it becomes not just that, but it's it's a trespass. Uh, in the businesses, so we we can assist with that. Uh, the other part is the businesses, you know, have to tell people that, hey, if you can't commit. The problem um, as the letter I gave you and that, there are exceptions to the mask rule. Uh, medical exceptions and that, medical exceptions only apply to employees of the business. But if people are walking in the business without a mask and they say they have a medical exception, that is not a violation. You know, so the employees, they can ask like what their medical, that doesn't mean that the employees have to wear a mask. They can say, I have a medical exception, and if they document it to their employer. They don't have to wear a mask. So there's a lot of. But we, we, you know, I I asked at the staff meeting this morning because it was coming up, you know. I've talked to the offices and, you know, uh, Officer McGrath has been downtown and I said, have you been asking? He goes, yeah, I I tell people to wear masks and some say. Yeah, some say, you know, um, oh, I forgot it. I I'd say that's probably the vast majority of people say. I forgot to put it on, I did it and put it right on. It's 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 not really uh, an issue. But there are people out there that would be very. It make it a very untenable situation for the officer because they want a confrontation. You know, for that.
Um, have any of the other officers besides the community officer been engaging in those conversations?
Yes, when when they go into a business, if they see it or they they're good, they they're not, because I've I've. I've heard from other people that they say, oh, the officer drove right by people. The officer's not gonna be stopping because then. With everybody, but if there's a group of kids, they have done that. Uh, but if they stop for everybody not wearing a mask or or doing that, I I, you know, that would be taking up a lot of their time. You know.
Any problems with escalations?
Um, only a few. It nothing, nothing that really rose to it. But as I said in my letter, if people want to tell us, like, I'm not talking to you and walk away, there's nothing we can do. There is, you know, there there is certain laws, you know, and that's why these are, these aren't laws, these are orders uh, during during emergency. Motor vehicle law has reasons why, you know, it's a civil violation, but we can create a seizure. Uh, there's other things that it's a civic, we can, you know, uh, specifically classified in motor vehicle law. There's nothing that says an officer, if they tell you to stop on the street, unless you're committing a criminal offense, if you have to stop and talk.
And the officers are wearing masks themselves, correct?
Yes, that's part of the uh, rules and. I've had a couple of people uh, that have reported and I've I've spoken with the officers and they've said that I completely. Got out of the car, completely forgot to put it on, but I put it on right when I realized. I I mean, I I have to understand that I've I've done it. I think uh, I think everybody's kind of done it at times, you know. Um, you know, but once reminded, oh yeah, there's never been, you know, uh, I'm surprised how there hasn't been much resistance to any of it.
Okay, uh, anything else from anyone? All right, uh, Chief, did you have anything else for us or was that uh, I, because I I know you have the other document, um.
Yeah, that's. That's uh, he's just sure how it how it does aligns with the master plan, that was.
Right, right, right.
Right, yeah, that that's that's just like how um, I know uh. Greg had advised me like al- also getting to like how your goals and things are working towards the master plan. That's why I put that little summary together. You know, which the explore the re- regionalization of fire and police dispatch. That has been done in the past and right now that's not cost effective, so that, but down the road, maybe it will be. So it'll be revisited every so often, but myself and the fire chief uh, talked that with the uh. The plan, I mean, with the uh, people doing the master plan.
Yeah.
And, you know, they they understood that, okay, we we won't, it's not good now, but. Can we put it in there for that? They said, yeah, it 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 should be something that can be revisited to save money. Uh, but unless you are the uh, hub community with the uh. With the regional uh, dispatch center. Then you you lose a lot of, when you lose a lot of this and then you become uh. Dependent on them and what and what they ask, so.
Personal regional dispatch is that if we, if it ever happens. There has to be a way to find out to, for you to identify when they answer the phone, who they called initially. So if I call me, if I call nine one one or whatever. Pick up the phone and say Maynard Police, as opposed to saying some random, you know. Regional communication center, because that to me is confusing, just.
That's, that's, that's what when uh, you know, we looked into, you know, uh, a while back, I remember a while, a long time ago. At when asking other towns, other towns, one of the main critics of it was, is the dispatchers didn't know anything about the town. They didn't know anything about about this because, you know, just one of many towns that the dispatch, and if they don't, if they're not from that town. They didn't know, and you'd be calling, telling them where you are or telling them where you need services, and they didn't know uh, where it was, so.
Yeah, I I even as a dispatcher, I called uh, the regional dispatch center. I was trying to call, I think it was Lancaster or something. And so I called the number and they pick up as regional dispatch and I was like, can I talk to Lancaster? They, I don't know how this works now. So um, so yeah, so there are definitely some flaws in.
Yeah, and and once you do it, they take away all your um, nine one one equipment, they take away all that, you know, you won't get it back.
Right.
But it, but again, that that's something that uh, the Chief Stowers and I discussed with uh. Uh, Adam Khan.
Oh, yeah.
And came there and uh, they understood, but they they said like, well, we hear the regionalization, you know. Okay, you know, we will agree that maybe down the road it it might work, but not right now. Support optimal personnel levels within the police department, fire department. Uh, I think um. That my goals are number one and number three with uh, restructuring the department uh, with um. Putting in uh, Officer McGrath in downtown uh, fit a couple of those needs, so supporting the op- optimal uh, this. Um, with one twenty nine with the new uh, residency, it's kind of tough to to really see how everything will be one. COVID lit, you know, until COVID lifts, but you know, when everybody's going out to eat. Uh, when the restaurants and bars open back up, we'll see what kind of police services uh, may be needed. You know, in the future, but right now, you know, we're at a good level. Develop and frequently update a coordinated emergency management plan. Uh, myself and Chief Stowers are um. Continuously getting in line, but I think with what happened with the pandemic, I is. It it it's showing some of the things we need to work on in town too. Um, I think uh, you know, uh. I know I've talked to Greg, you know, with uh, the Board of Health with this and getting everybody on uh, a better. Uh, page of plan, but we're continuously working on our policies here at the station uh, for certain emergencies that we're. The primary, and then there's the other emergencies where we're a secondary or a supportive service. Uh, study and address the impact of population and economic changes and demand for public safety services. Uh, that's a long term, I think, but that does go into all the new growth and all the new uh, that that. Really can't uh, see right now. Um, you know, the restaurants are busy, uh, you know, the bars are closed, you know, the. The the nightlife isn't there that usually is there in town, so uh, we will see that. But the goals of having the restructuring, having the downtown will help because we'll have that liaison to the businesses where. They'll be able to uh, call him directly. He has his own department phone, so they can call and use him. And uh, the feedback so far is overwhelmingly positive that, you know, he's down there, they have somebody to contact. And uh, keep informed of evolving public safety technology and best practices incorporated as appropriate. Uh, yes, well, I'm always doing, I'm looking into getting parking enforcement uh, equipment. We are getting the E citations, which is basically, you know, the officers aren't gonna have to write it out when they punch it in the computer. Uh, comes out, we'll have printers put in the car. Uh, the state actually uh, supported that. By paying, they pay for the printers if you go to the citation. It makes their job easier because the citations are uh, printed right there. And uh, you give that person, but then the citation is already gone to them, so it saves them, so it's worth them uh, supplying us with the printers. We signed the contract back in June on that, you know, they haven't been installed yet because of, again, backlog with COVID and all the things going on. The other technology uh, stuff, you know, these body cameras that is with part of that reform, there's a study gonna be uh, complaining. There's there's problems with the body cameras that the state has to change certain laws, you know, the privacy laws, the two party uh, law of communication. You know, the Wyatt Out statute, those type of things they have to change, you know, in order to do that. But there's also that when to turn them on, when not to turn them on. Uh, they gotta come up with basically a uh. A policy that every department uses that's uniform. You know, and that's what they're working towards, because you don't want one department to use it one way and have these uh, uh, policies when another department uses that. They want a uniform policy for the state, so as as that moves. They want a uniform policy for the state, so as, as that moves towards that, we'll, uh, get that and what requirements will be for the. Uh, is undetermined for the storage for public records, that's, that, that was always my one key. You know, when somebody asks for a copy of a report. You could print out, you know, the report, it takes maybe fifteen, twenty minutes to look at the report, redact it, do, do what I have. When you have something that you need to redact on video because there's privacy issues, there's, you know, uh, certain thing. You're gonna look minute for minute. You can't just fast forward, because if there's something said that shouldn't be said, or you're picking up a conversation behind you, that needs to be, uh. That and the technology to, um. Mute that. But not the whole conversation, you know, all, all of that type of stuff is, uh, it needs to be dealt at, at the state level. Uh, before we can, uh, go into that, but that's been looked into. And then constantly, you know, any, you know, I, uh, when we get on with chiefs, anybody who says they're working towards, uh, getting something to work in that. You know, we, we, uh. We look into it if it's, if it's worth it and on.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions about any of that that the chief just went through? Any additional stuff? All right. All right, well, Chief, thank you very much for, for the presentation, appreciate it, thank you for, uh.
And I, I, again, I appreciate the continued support and everything from the, uh, the board.
The town appreciates you too, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item fourteen, um. The annual town meeting, it's that time again, Greg. I will entertain a motion. From somebody.
I'll, uh, I'll move to, uh. Prove a combined annual and special town meeting, uh, with a date and time and place of Monday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. At seven P M at the Fowler School, Free Tiger Drive, Maynard, Mass, zero one seven five four.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, uh, Greg.
So, um, just as it says in the notes, this is in accordance with the bylaws. And it's, and this is the standard procedure, but obviously we are not in standard times, so, uh. You know, this is the placeholder, if we have to adjust it, just like we did last year, we will adjust it, we will, whether it be outdoors or otherwise. Of, of a different note, um, the, it was kind of interesting that the state had sent out guidance for town meeting, a little. Uh, I don't know what, that, a lot, most towns that already had their town meetings and then we got the guidance from the state on how to do town meetings, but that's okay. Um, but, um, I, we, we fell right in line with all their recommendations, like we, you know, they kind of hold it outdoors. Um, uh, you know, try, try to be cognizant of health concerns and, and proximities and social distancing and whatnot, so. I think we've done outstanding, so we, we've, we have a good track record of town meetings even during a pandemic and I, and I suspect it will, will be just as good.
So you're saying that we were ahead of our time?
I think we are. I think, I, I think there was only like. Less than a handful, I, I don't even know, like maybe two or three towns had a town meeting before we did, um, and, you know, great.
We're good at picking the weather too.
No kidding. So, so this day is in accordance with the bylaw.
Okay, anyone have any questions? All right, then.
What's the, I guess, what's, how close can we get before we say, no, this thing's still going on, we need to do an outdoor venue?
I think we, oh, great question, um. I mean, I can't remember when we made that call last time. I think you can make it, I mean, technically, I think, I think, I, I have to refresh my memory, but I think, I think the town moderator can, can adjust it even the day of. Like, i- if.
Practically in terms of setup, I guess.
Oh, yeah, no, I wouldn't, right, I, a month or so, right, like I wouldn't want to have to start calling to vendors and, and doing all those significant plans. No, we, I think, I think that was, we probably made it within a month of last, when we, when we shifted.
Well, we went, we went to the Covid thing in, in March, right, and town meeting was scheduled for May, so we. We made the adjustment probably around early April.
April somewhere.
That was a push off, I'm saying what, yeah, I, 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 I think I got my answer, so.
Okay, no, I mean, we're, we're gonna play, we're gonna play it by ear, like, we're, as we're gonna watch, whether it be the vaccines or otherwise. I, I don't think it's gonna be as sudden and, and what, and fortunately, because we have good plans, we'll just kind of be able to execute those plans.
Kind of like the October meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, uh, all in favor, uh, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes, thank you very much. And the next is, uh, would you like to talk about the FY twenty-two budget?
Sure. So, um, just to highlight a couple of significant changes that we've had, now, this is revision four. So as, as you're kind of, as we're telling the story about, uh, about the budget, um, so revision four reflects. Pretty much the same revenue, except we, except we did add the, the presumption imminently that the fire station gets approved for the debt exclusion. So if you look at revision four in the, in the, in the revenue portion, it does add, um, the revenue collector for the. The other sort of highlights is that we've, we've kind of updated some of the department's submissions, so if you, if you're looking down at the expenditures portion. Under the revision four, um, column, uh, you can see slight change for government. There is a significant change for the, for the, um, school department, because we actually, we, in talking with the superintendent's office. You know, I give them the same sort of messaging that I give everyone else, you know, like you, you tell me what your, what your, what your number you want it to be at. And then we talk about, you know, justifications and, and kind of like compromising, uh, to be able to fit into the entire budget. So they gave me twenty-one point one eight one million dollars, which is, that's in line with, with where they were at. You know, pre-Covid, so to speak, like that's, that kind of gets them to a level of service from where they were from there. And, but that twenty million eight is, that was the, that was the town meeting number in October, so when we, when we reduced the budget overall. So they, in order to get them back to where they were pre, um, revisions, that's the twenty-one million. Um, and then, and, but that's not the final number, like they'll, they will probably give me a further revision. Shortly and then, um, and then I'll have that number to play with. The other things to highlight is, uh, Public Works number went up, um, by, uh, I mean, it's about. It's over a hundred thousand dollars, some of that money is from that department request is, um, to address. Um, snow and ice, so, snow and ice, we only, we put the same amount of. Uh, this, I'm not saying, by the way, I'm saying everything that Ari said about the subcommittee the other day, so like, i- if you heard that, I'm, you're, I'm saying the same thing just quicker. So, snow and ice, um, we always just budget a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in the general fund. But that means we're that much more reliant on free cash every year, so if we want to, if we want to change that, that. Um, imbalanced, uh, uh, reliance on free cash, then I have to put more money it, through general fund. So this, this reflects that to a degree.
How much did you put into snow and ice from there? How much did you add, do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall, I apologize, but it's, it's not, it's not the four hundred thousand dollars, like, like if we didn't want to have to be reliant on, on. On, um, free cash, I would have to really increase it, so it's not there, but similarly, yeah, kind of same concept is for, um. The capital non-debt lines are like the pay-as-you-go capital, we, we had not been paying into that, so like, same thing. If we want to make incremental change into not being so reliant on free cash every year, so that we can do other things like. Like you heard from Transio, OPEB contributions, um, and, and just sort of other capital projects, then you, you have to wean yourself off of free cash. And you do that through, through recurring revenue of, of general fund. But it's painful process, because that means you're gonna have to make compromises otherwise, like the recommission, so I. Not to get too much into it, but that, that's just the conversations that's happened every year and it'll happen again this year. So you can see the, the big, the big scary number at the bottom is still big and scary, which is, you know, like we, we have a net. Um, we're in the, we're in the red of, uh, on this revision four of one million forty-three thousand two hundred twenty-three. And so my plan is by Christmas is to give you guys a, a, have that number be zero. Um, and, and that means kind of coming with a worst case scenario budget, right, so like, not everyone's gonna be happy. And, and we do it based on, on conservative revenue estimates, we try to be conservative with our expenses. And then that allows me to have a budget before Mike retires, Mike as a retires and then, and then I can write a budget message to submit you by. By January twenty-first and then, and then we'll make those amendments after that, uh, as we get better numbers.
Okay.
That's my story and I'm sticking to it, but that, that's where we are with the budget.
All right.
It's not retiring next week.
No, not yet.
David, you're on mute if you're cracking a joke.
Uh, I saw, I just said December seventh was the date he gave.
No, January.
No, he said this, he said the seventh at our budget subcommittee meeting.
He was, that was a jest, that was a joke.
I couldn't tell. Serious. Me on it, um. Where did we end up on that assumption for marijuana revenue?
It's still, it's still the.
Buck and a quarter.
Is it the buck and the quarter number?
Buck and a quarter, yeah.
Yeah, do you see, um. See where it says local receipts and then there's, I, I grade, uh, I put like a gray highlight around two point eight million dollars. But it was point nine million dollars, like the revision before. Knocked it off by a hundred grand, so it was two twenty-five and now it's one twenty-five. But, you know, like, I, you know, like, I, I've said this during the budgets of committee, I might say this to the selectmen too, like, in one of the recent Beacon villagers, um. Green Star took out a whole one-page ad that says they're gonna open in January. So if, if I can get better revenue estimates because they've opened in January, so by the time where we've submitted the budget for the, for the warrants of the, um. Town meeting, I might have. Hopefully, better news and, uh, and I can play with that.
Wondering if a pandemic would increase or decrease sales and that, I don't know, do we know if it did so for alcohol?
Ooh, good question. I asked Olaf how it was affecting, because Ol- Olaf of, um, I can't remember his last name, but he's the manager of, um. Wellspring and, and he said their medical of marijuana is doing very well. I don't know, it's hard to make those correlations, but I understand the point you're making, I don't know.
Retail, retail food, retail alcohol. Restaurants to go drink.
Benefiting from all that.
Chief, have you seen DUI incidences come back?
Uh, they, they, there've been more DUIs lately, um. You know, uh, still not at the level, so are people going out to bars, you know, a lot of people drinking at home. You know.
Just staying there.
Rushing to get, rushing to get home before the ten o'clock curfew.
But, but yeah, they, they, uh, alcohol sales have gone up, like from liquor stores and all of that, because, yeah, they can't go out and buy a drink.
No, I mean, that wasn't mandatory, I mean, like, and I also, I mean, I was listening to Mr. Heinz, right, so I'm, I am taking, I am receptive to, to what. Not only recommission, but all the different, um, um, stakeholders are in the budget and I. You know, I, I, I listen to them and we, we, we try to knock out the best budget we can, so that's, that's all I can tell them at this point.
No, I, I appreciate that and I think that that was part of the reason I wanted, and, and again, I'm, I'm kicking myself that. It didn't occur to me that obviously the whole board would come, so why wouldn't I tell them to post it, so. Um, you know, I, I just definitely wanted them in front of a larger audience than just me, um, to, to hear, you know, their, their concerns. So, but I definitely think, you know, there might be some out of the box thinking ideas for, for some of it, so, you know, so I'm hopeful. All right, uh, anyone else have any questions for Greg? All right. Then we're moving on to the town administrator report, Greg again.
Hey, so, um. It's actually a little shorter this week, I just realized it's, it's.
Yeah, it's only three pages.
Yeah, oh, sorry about that, we'll put more pictures.
Lots, lots of pictures, yeah.
I, I really. I took that first picture, I really like it, so anyways, um, uh, but I do appreciate, to your point, I, and I mind, I do appreciate the pictures. I mean, I like a, a good look, a good picture and Justin, um, DeMarco in particular, plus you see that the chief will give me picture, uh, Chief Stowers will give me pictures. I do, I think the pictures are really helpful, um, as I said this before, like it helps to show just the, the amount of. Whether it be, in this case, infrastructure, but it helps to show like the, the demands that are on the town's departments, to kind of keep the maintenance and, and keep up, keep plus. As people here, sure enough, water gets shut off from time to time, you can see what's happening underground and, um. On that note as well, um, I think we've already sent out the notice today that the valve in front of town hall and Russell's convenience store. Similarly, this insertion valve, it, it failed, so we will have to replace that and we're gonna try to do that on Thursday night. I don't think, that's not in my report, but we're gonna try to do that on Thursday night, um, so it will just impact that surrounding neighborhood and town hall, but we'll be close. Um, so it just goes to show, like, it's, it's an ongoing, uh, work is to kind of maintain the water sewer system, plus all the other infrastructure demands that are on the town.
I'm sorry if it, is that gonna affect the PD so I can let them know that the bathrooms and all of that aren't gonna work that night?
It probably is. So Chief, follow up with Justin, because, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Make sure there's a photo party in the back.
Yeah, uh, it, it, do we have the keys to the schools and that's what we did the last time, water break, uh.
All right, that's enough information.
Uh, I just update you. Update, update the board on a couple of things, so, um, last night was the first night of, of, um, we're doing preliminary screening for the, for the library director position. Um, I've been in conversations with, um, with a, a, a potential firm and accounting firm to help us out with the treasure collector's office. And in, as an interim sort of solution, um, while we are pursuing, um, interviewing for that position. And then for the treasure collector, and then separately, um, HR coordinator Stephanie Duggan is, is finalizing the job advertisement for. Um, the town accountant and then we'll get that out the door, um, as soon as possible. And, and then we can move forward with that, but it, it's immediately, it's a lot, I mean, like to do all the negotiations, plus all the, all the, you know. Uh, various interviewing that we're doing. So, it might hats off to her for trying to keep up with it all, but we're, we're, um, we just have a lot on our plate. That's all I had, Madam Terwin, unless there's questions.
Uh, anyone having questions? All right.
I like the pictures.
Like the picture too.
There probably won't be any pictures now that I've said I'd like the pictures to.
Five pages of bullet point.
All right, uh, Chair comments, I actually do have, uh, a couple of things. Uh, tonight, let me just look real quick, um. So the first thing I want to remind everybody is that, um, and I'm reminding whoever's still watching, whoever, uh, will watch later is that. Uh, it is December first, so this starts the overnight parking ban. Um, so that is something to keep in mind, um, you know, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. Uh, the other thing I wanted to, uh, say is I know that, so I think Chris is joining me and Jeff, are you joining, uh, Katie and I? For the bounds on.
Saturday?
That's the Saturday, yep.
Yes.
So, uh, we will be, we will be. The bounds of Maynard.
Make sure you wear boots.
It's supposed to rain.
It's supposed to rain.
I am, I will not melt.
Okay.
So, all right, we'll figure it out.
Oh, I have a conflict now.
Because it's gonna rain. All right, um, the other thing is, uh, regarding, you know, there has been a lot of talk, uh, in general regarding, uh. Regarding Covid, regarding masks, regarding, um, you know, health, I was able to sit in on the board of health meeting, um. I was able to sit in on the board of health meeting on, um, last week, I think it was. And, uh, I did hear Kelly, Kelly, who is our health agent, was talking about, um, the. That she does investigate reports, complaints, um, and Chief, you might be able to help me with this, but. When she does get complaints regarding, um, businesses not wearing masks, employees in businesses not wearing masks. Like that, they do follow up and, um, she speaks to the businesses, um, she has written. She has written warnings to businesses and she has fined a couple of businesses, at least one business, um, so that type of follow-up is being done.
Yeah, she has had us deliver letters to them, she's had us go talk to some businesses when she can, you know, and they can't get it, but, yeah, we. Businesses, we, it are easier because it's identifiable and they, you know, can move and we can send them, uh, a citation at any time. You know, if, if they're not, if they refuse to comply.
Right, no, I, I appreciate that, so, um, you know, and I think that, you, you, hearing, hearing kind of the, the sense of the board. I, I don't mind having the board of health inviting them to come, um. Speak at one of, you know, for us all to, to talk, to talk together, um, at a future meeting. But I think as far as the individual, um. Mask enforcement that keeps kind of rising, bubbling to the surface from time to time, um, I do agree that it's, that it is a tough. It is a tough position to put anyone in, um, especially with the particular orders as written. So I do fully support continued education, continued reminders. Um, you know, again, Chief, if you see, if, if, if the officer sees a group, group of kids or hey, did you forget a mask, whatever. You know, just the, the reminders that there are people who are watching. You know, just the the reminders that there are people who are watching, um, you know, I don't necessarily think that it's great for the public. To engage in that confrontation, just because I do agree that we're kind of in a, you know, we're in a tense environment every, anyway. I think that there are a lot of people that, you know, we're all, we've all been dealing with pandemic since March. And different people have different tolerance levels and I just don't want to see anyone getting hurt. So that's kind of my, uh, my take on it is just, um, you know, we we can recommend. That everybody should be wearing a mask, um, you know, and we can do as much as we can to remind people. That that is the best way to be a good member of the community. Um, so that's my probably fifty cents on that.
Jump in if we're, before you move on to another subject on that?
Yes.
So I just, um, um, I think one, one addition, um, I I after talking with the chief a bit today. Um, and before, um, have a better understanding of why more strict enforcement is not a great idea. Um, but I I feel that within the community, they don't understand. And I've seen the number of comments back and forth about, you know, finger pointing, uh, between, they accuse the Board of Health and the police. Of finger pointing at each other for responsibility, um, which I don't think is the case, but I I feel collectively as a town, we could be better. Not just about saying, you know, here's our voluntary compliance and education, but why are we not enforcing a mandate more strictly? I don't have an answer as to the best way to get that communication or what what that, those points look like. But I think simply continuing, especially as we see cases exponentially rise, um, right now. And then in two weeks, if you already get the Board of Health in front of your cases are predicted to be much, much worse. So I I think this is a quicker problem than a two-week kind of turnaround before the bell. But it becomes a more explicit issue, um, of of not just saying, you know, once more, we're gonna encourage voluntary compliance and education. But explicitly why we are not doing stricter enforcement of the public mask mandate. And then I I think part of that communication needs to be some of the other places where we are doing enforcement, the businesses you just mentioned. Um, the gathering size limits, um, because it it, I think a lot of people don't know about those. And if they don't know about those, it looks like we're doing nothing, which is also not true. And so, um, how we compile that all into one message, um, looking more at Greg's direction right now. Or Megan's, I don't know, but I, it's, it's a problem that needs a solution.
I almost think that that's actually part of, um, part of the reason why we invite the Board of Health. Because I think that it's actually a collaborative message between the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen. Um, and involve the health agent and and, um, you know, in town staff. Um, to craft that message. So I do think that that's actually part of a larger conversation that, you know. We can look at inviting them to to come to a meeting.
Last week, had this conversation in the past that we should have had them, you know.
The health agent came, um, we, because we had a conversation that they should, the health agent did come and we did talk to her, uh, about some of the issues. But, um, but we have not had the board as a whole.
And last, last week, um, in my, uh, nerdism of watching local political, uh, you know, broadcasts on television. I watched Acton, um, they had a combined Board of Sport of Health and Board of Selectmen meeting. Uh, and they just talked about what they were doing, uh, you know, and it was, it was Zoom and it was, um. It was, they they talked about what they're doing in order to, uh, try to, uh, you know, improve situation. And some of the things that they talked about were, they had, they had a, um, a library situation where they were allowing thirty people into the library. At any given time and then they reduced it and now they just have curbside. They have, they're putting up a lot more signs along their, um, their rail trail. Um, to assure, to assure that people are masking up on the rail trail. There was a whole litany of things, but but what it did, uh, if nothing else, was, uh, exhibited. There were, I think they said at one point it was, um. Uh, I think they said there was a hundred and six, I was watching on Facebook Live. I think they said there were a hundred and sixty people on the Zoom call. Watching it. I think it gave a sense of confidence that their Board of Health. And and Board of Selectmen were on the same page and were working towards, uh, a plan of some type. And it was, you know, Greg and I had this discussion last week. I mean, the meeting was run by their health director. They had the person who was assisting with the meeting was their town nurse. Then they have their Board of Health, which is made up of, you know, all these doctors and whatever. And, you know, everybody was referring to one another as doctor so-and-so and whatever. And it just, it just gave off a sense of, they knew what they were doing, they had a plan, here's what we're doing. They were able to talk about things and it gave a confidence. And I, the sense I get from some folks in town is that there's a lack of confidence that Maynard is doing anything. From the Board of Health perspective, um, and I know that that's not true. They're doing, you know, we have a three-member board, they're doing the best they can, the health director's a part-time position, she's doing the best she can. They're just, I think there's just a lack of, uh, of visibility that I think needs to be worked on. And so whether or not we have a, they had a special meeting for it, whether or not we have a special meeting for it or bring them in as part of our meeting. I think it's probably a good idea, um, and just have a discussion about things we can do. And welcome the public to make comments about what their concerns are, so that there's a sense of, uh, of confidence.
Yeah, I I agree. And I think that that's the thing is that, you know, I I think it's like many things in town government, right? If you don't see it, you don't think that it's happening, um, which is, which is very, very far from the truth. Um, you know, there is a lot that goes on behind the scenes, um, every single day. So, um, you know, I, I went to the Board of Health meeting, but I'm not gonna speak for the Board of Health because I'm not the Board of Health. So that's why it's easier to have them here also to talk, to to speak on their behalf. Um, so I will, I'll talk to Greg and and see what we can come up with, um, for that.
I'll point out with cases rising, I think speed is more of the essence than they would have been for, for, you know, the the long kind of flat line of summer.
Yeah, now we're like a steady eight seventeen, seventeen to twenty. I feel like we're bouncing back and forth between seventeen and twenty at this point.
But people are dropping off and other people are adding on, so the actual daily increase seems to be going up. You know, when you look at the total so far, it's like one seventy or whatever, and then the next day it's at one seventy-six. But the active cases might go down because people from last week fell off and only, you know, so it's tough to tell unless you watch the totals.
Yeah. All right, nope, I can, I understand, Jeff, I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I think that, and my only other thing is, um, I I put something on my personal Facebook page. Um, I know that that Maynard has been sharing it on their Facebook page, um, just getting the word out about the fire station. Um, the one thing that I made a point of on on my, on my per, again, on my personal page was, um, to, to clarify to people. Um, that part of the reason they're getting this ballot is because they checked a box that said, receive all ballots in twenty twenty. Because I think that that kind of is a little confusing. If they're not expecting something, they want to know why they're receiving it. So, um, I just kind of wanted to get the word out that if for some reason you checked this box, you're gonna get this ballot and this is what it's about. Um, so just kind of a, just thought I'd like, I'd share that as well. Um, but I seem to, I feel like I've heard a lot of, um, very thoughtful conversations that have, that have, uh, come out of that so far. So, uh, so I really appreciate the residents, um, you know, really listening to to side, all sides of this, so.
Yeah, and and I think the clarification, Jeff did a nice job posting, you know, from, from his perspective. And also Josh Morse did a unbelievable job from his perspective. So there's a lot of, um, I think a lot of people have been voting for this, yes, and and it's a nice, it's a nice feeling. Because I don't see, I don't hear anybody about, you know, negative about it. So, but the information that you provide to them, educating them, because sometimes they don't understand, well, wait a minute, at the town meeting, I thought I voted at it. So why do I have to vote again? You know, so they need to know why we're doing this.
All right, um, so, oh, Jeff, do you have something? Sorry.
Just following up on on that line, I've gotten, um, um, I've got a number of people, like I'm happy to support the fire station if I could get my way through the working of the question. Two, two additions could we make to the, um, the website, which I've been trying to direct people to, Greg? Um, number one is, could we explicitly say a yes vote means this and a no vote means that? It was unclear as of, I think, I don't know, I maybe checked it last night last, but, um. That one, um, I think would be a big help, that yes is to support raising money for the fire station, no is to, you know, not raise money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, just something as clear as that. And then the second one is the, the, um, that main site did not have, uh, the location or time. Just the date of the election, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
Say December sixteenth, Fowler, seven to eight.
Yeah, no problem. It's not seven to eight, uh, local elections, I think are seven to five.
Oh, all right.
Well, I'll make sure what it is.
I thought I saw seven to eight at.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Couldn't be seven to five.
Document that we had.
I think it's, I thought.
I don't think we, I don't think we would have had to vote to change the time.
Okay, well, I apologize, I retract what I said and it's ten thirty, so. We'll make sure it's correct, whatever.
It's seven to eight, not ten thirty.
Okay, yeah, right.
That too. All right, uh, well, Jeff.
The last meeting is seven to eight.
Seven to eight, very good.
Excellent, all right. So Jeff, while you're, while you're here, do you want to, uh, continue on with, uh, your comments?
Well, I already, I already gave them all. No, I'm just, I got, I got one more, um, I, I was able to stop in, um, to, uh, Six Bridges new location. Um, they had suffered fire damage, um, after the fire at the salt cave and now they're open, um, right across from Memorial Park. Um, across from the, uh, Christmas tree and menorah, so I I encourage everybody, they're, they're, um, have hand sanitizer as you walk in. Um, so, uh, you know, uh, please realize that they've moved and check them out in their new location. And then just overall, um, you know, with with everything, takeout is still considered to be very safe. Um, you know, masked, you know, quick shopping trips in, support the local businesses, um, very difficult time this year, so.
Absolutely, I agree, thank you. Uh, Armand.
Um, I was gonna kind of piggyback on the Six Bridges. I think, uh, you know, that's a fabulous spot and they did an unbelievable job. Uh, in inside the way it's laid out and all the, you know, options you have from all the different artists. It's, it's just really nice. And then the other thing is, I'm sure everybody knows the market basket is gonna be opening up, so everybody's anticipating and excited about that. So I know that they're, Becky reached out to us about giving us a tour, they want to give us a tour to, to, uh, see what that looks like. That's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be really great for the town. And the last thing I want to just wish Megan, uh, um, good luck with your, you know, maternity making. Um, today was supposed to be your day, you're not supposed to be here, you were supposed to leave, right?
I'm sticking around for a little bit longer, but.
Oh, you are, okay, good. Well, lots of luck to you. That's all I got.
Excellent, all right, sounds good. Uh, David.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, Chris.
I know, I know you're good.
We have, um, some, we're gonna have to make some upcoming board appointments. Do we ever get anywhere, we ever finalize the, uh, standards?
Oh, the, uh, the interview questions.
Kind of, well, well, there was two parts to it. There was the interview questions and also the alleged code of conduct, what, what we.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I have a draft of the interview questions, like the pre-application or questionnaire, whatever we would call it. But yes, I have a draft of that and I, I had already had Michelle Jenkins take a look at it and now I'm having Joanna take a look at it, the town clerks. Uh, to make sure that it kind of mi-meets whatever their criteria is, so I I'll have that to you soon. And then, um, yeah, the code of conduct, uh, and the enforcement of the code of conduct or code of ethics.
Code of ethics, yeah, we talked about it, but we never voted on it.
No, we didn't. So like, we had, we had attorney Castro from Metalmacosta come in and we reviewed it and the board gave us some input and he made those revisions. It's been, it's still available, we just, we just haven't, it hasn't come back up yet. We just haven't gotten around to going back to do it. So yeah, absolutely, we could put it on to agenda and try to fit it in, um, as best we can. I agree, like, I, it's something I've had in my mind, it's like, I do want to get back to that.
And speaking about that, we were supposed to also work on the policies and procedures for the, for the board and update on, where, where are we with that?
Right.
Select McGavin was selected as he lays on to work with me.
Oh, right.
Yeah, and so it's on my desk, so.
This is start.
On my list, it's on my list.
But but anyway, I'm serious, it, it's the, um, you know, we, we suggested the code of ethics for a reason and. You know, once again, the, the reasoning behind the start of the conversation has kind of reared its ugly head in a couple of different instances. And it's just, it's just garbage and it shouldn't be allowed of somebody that is appointed to a public, public seat in the town of Maynard.
I can, um, I can, I can reshare it with the board and then, and then have it ready for comments.
It should, it should play into whether or not we appoint or reappoint people.
All right. Is that all you have, sir?
If I have to bite my lip, so should everybody else.
When have you ever bitten your lip?
Trust me, trust me, but I'm, but it's just some of the shit that I see and some of the. Some of the things that I'm seeing and reading in different, different places. Written by people who are on town boards and town committees and everything else is disgusting.
Yep.
And it ought to be held accountable.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think that that's something that kind of fell off all our radars, so, uh, but it is, it absolutely is important, so.
Now you could wipe the blood off your lips, you could buy the light, the blood on your lips, you could wipe it now.
Yeah, I got a tissue right here. But, but, you know, I mean, it's understandable why it fell off the radar with everything that's going on in the world, but it's still, it is just when, every time it comes up. It's unnecessary. But it's a whole other story. But anyways, hey, Megan, congratulations, good luck. Your cornhouse, because you might want to cover that helmet.
Seriously, they're not doing too well.
Either your husband might have to put it on and go play.
I'm sure I'll see you all at Market Basket at some point, so.
Good luck with the baby and everything, good health to everybody.
Good luck. And and Megan, if you want me to just drop off groceries on my way back.
I've become an expert shopper because my parents, my parents are, uh, in COVID lockdown, so I've been a designated shopper for the last two weeks. So if you need anything, just send me the list, I'll pick it up.
I think I need to send my husband for the first, for the first couple of times, uh, so.
Very particular, they even tell me I have to get the fruit cups from Wilson's, I can't get a. Chasing myself around Lexington every day, buying groceries.
All right, so, um, and and really quick, I did want to say, because Jeff reminded me, because he, you know, reminded me about Six Bridges. Um, I also wanted to say the theater creamery changed their offer.
Oh, yes, coffee.
They're, they're offering coffee and hot chocolate in the morning. They're now open at seven AM.
Just coffee and hot chocolate, no.
They got muffins too.
Muffins.
Muffins, yeah.
Muffins and, uh, and like a wake-up milkshake.
That's, that's being creative, good for them.
Oh, yeah, so I just thought I would throw that out there too. Um, but other than that, thank you, everybody. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So me.
All right, uh, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, wave.
Have a great night, everybody.
Night, everyone, thank you.